Terrific. Welcome to the January 17th, 2019, meeting of the Select Board Town of Sherburne. I'd ask David Williams, Town Administrator, to read the proposed agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we will amend or approve the agenda, and then a period of public comment. There are no public comments that I'm aware of. Then, consideration of a consent agenda with consideration of a one-day liquor license, Conservation Connection, and consideration of a one-day liquor license, Sherburne Community Foundation payroll warrant, and then setting the next meeting dates of January 31st, February 14th, February 28th, March 14th, March 28th, April 11th, and then minutes of 12:06:18 and 12:20:18. The second item is PAC Cassell with permission to construct a memorial area at Farm Pond for the physically challenged. And then Sharon McPherson, Financial Director, Accountant, with consideration of financial operational matters and consideration of a reserve fund transfer request from the CM&amp;D. Then review consideration of warrant articles for 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Zoning, amend Section 3.2.2 accessory apartment with John Higley from Planning Board. Appropriation of funds for rail trail, John Higley, Planning Board. 41 North Main Street, Andrew Consigli, Gary Lebarsky. And change CM&amp;D name to DPW with Director Sean Colleen. Then discussion and review of various departmental budgets and capital requests for 2020. The departments include Veterans, Historical Commission, Recycling, Transfer Station, Town Buildings, CM&amp;D, Fire Department, Accounting. Then routine business as Town Administrator report and Selectmen reports.
Terrific. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
I'd like to move to amend that we defer discussion on 41 North Main. I think this project deserves a lot of attention, but I also think that it's at a stage where we don't have preliminary information that we need to move the discussion along. There's also a lot of public interest in this project, and slotting it for 10 minutes here and 10 minutes there. This will be the third or fourth time we've seen essentially the same presentation from these guys. I want this to succeed if it can succeed, but it's got to succeed in its own merits, and they have to present it and show us and show the town that they've resolved all the threshold issues, which are, is a TIF legal? Do the technical issues work? How does the financing work? My suggestion would be that we set up a special meeting, even a workshop meeting or a public discussion meeting, and we have a single meeting that's completely devoted to talking about that project. And we could either put it on the regular schedule or on an off week. And they're also, as I understand it, not looking necessarily to be on the annual town meeting, but possibly on a special town meeting. So, for all those reasons, I would move that we take that off the agenda tonight.
Eric?
I mean, I would certainly support deferring any voting or technical comments on TIF. But it's been out there on next door Sherburne that they're presenting. They have a presentation ready to go. The draft that was provided shows it's quite a bit different than what they've presented in the past. More information. There's a lot of angst out there, it seems, on like, what are they doing Hunting Ave? And so on like that. They're here, ready to go on record and show what they're proposing. And I think then, given that there's a lot of expectation and a lot of unknowns out there, I think it'd be fair to at least allow them to give their presentation.
Can we set some kind of time limits on it, so it's not an open-ended discussion?
Yeah, I think an informational presentation would be helpful, because the devil is in the details, and this is a very complicated project. I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding of the process, and I'll talk about that later in the meeting, because, you know, town meeting is the legislative body, and there's a lot of information that needs to be presented and understood. I don't think it's anywhere near ready for consideration, but...
I would agree with that. I think, especially on the TIF discussion, there's too many unknowns to even discuss it tonight. But I agree with Eric that they do have a presentation that has some new information about their development, and I think it's only fair, since they're on the agenda and they're here tonight, to let them present that presentation.
The TIF is something, and I was kind of surprised to learn this today, maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention, that we don't actually know if they're eligible for a TIF. Is that correct?
Right.
Our town council hasn't advised that, and their council hasn't been able to conclusively ...
So there's no reason to even talk about that.
So why are we negotiating a TIF, exchanging drafts, having us review technical language? I think it's just premature, so we shouldn't talk about it.
I like the idea of a full-blown meeting devoted solely to this. But I think it is worth getting the information, and putting a 10- or 15-minute time limit on it probably makes sense, because this is a large project with a lot of moving parts, and I'd like to have an update on where the consideration is.
And you could even, just not even have public comment. Just present. We're not voting on anything, because I understand that you can just start going down that rabbit hole, and it's going to be, it could, you know, lose control, but maybe just present, show the information. Because the other thing is, people don't realize, in the last two weeks, this is the fifth public meeting on this. Planning Board's met twice, Conservation has discussed it twice, Health looked at it back in December, so it's actually been, you know, a lot of talks. And I think it's almost, I think it is some right time, as they're progressing and it's out there in public, to at least let them show a lot of the answers to a lot of the questions, and just keep it as that. Just a presentation, information, and move on to the next one.
And let's set up a meeting, as Mike suggested, where Planning, Conservation, and Board of Health, we can all be there. And everybody can discuss it at once, rather than, like you said, five different meetings in two weeks, and we can really, and the public can comment as well. But, like we said, the TIF is too early to talk about tonight.
This is not moving the ball. This process is not moving the ball. And whichever way it's going to move, it's just, we're going in circles.
I just think there's a lot of anxious nature about the unknowns, and they're willing to actually state what a lot of unknowns are, from the development on Huntington, to what they're actually doing on their property. And I think it's, I think if they have the information, it's fair to put that information out there and stop some of the angst.
Yeah, I don't, when I think back on the consideration of the Pulte proposal on Maple Street and on Coolidge Crossing, there were a ton of meetings, meeting after meeting. And I'm not sure you can have too many meetings, because the project changes. It may not be the most efficient process, but I would like to get an update. So, I would not support that. I'm not prepared to vote on anything. I don't think anyone is...
So I move we approve the agenda as presented, and with the understanding that we're not going to vote on anything.
Well, can we have an understanding that there's a limited
Time.
... time for presentation, and that's it? That this is not a...
And don't have public comment.
An endless?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And we'll do a standalone public comment.
Is it, are you taking questions?
I don't think during the agenda, we're just...
We're setting the agenda. When we come to the agenda item, then we'll...
Well, the question is actually about the agenda and Mr. Jamos' recommendation for a meeting. I'm wondering if in the process of creating the agenda tonight, you can make some kind of commitment to a large meeting, as was suggested, and give the public an opportunity to get their, wrap their heads around all of the information, and...
Yeah, I think you heard each of the four members support that idea. It wasn't a formal motion, but it's going to have to be properly noted as an agenda item.
And we have to touch base with the other boards to make sure, for an availability thing. I mean, we can't just set it and say, we expect all these other boards to be there. We've got to make sure their schedule works for them as well.
We can recommend and try to schedule a joint meeting. It doesn't mean that each of these other boards will agree on that process.
I understand, but I respectfully request that some statement to that effect be included in...
I think when we talk about meetings, we should, we should put it, we should pull the next meeting discussion off of the consent agenda, and just have a discussion of that in the context of our next meeting.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So when we do the consent agenda, we'll pull it out.
Yes. But first, we have to pass the agenda. This is, Chuck, when I was Chair, it never took us this long to pass the agenda.
I move we...
When you were Chair, I never made a motion like you just did.
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Got a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
The agenda's so good.
Terrific. Consideration of the consent agenda, one-day liquor license for Conservation Connection, Sherburne Forest and Trails, the Community Foundation, the payroll warrant. Let's delete the next meetings. Our goal is to schedule meetings every other week. I will be out of town for one of the February meetings, so Mike, you or another member will have to chair that meeting. And then the last agenda, consent agenda item, is the approval of the minutes for December 6th and December 20th, 2018.
I'll move we accept the consent agenda without the next meetings and discuss that separately.
I'm second that motion. All in favor? So, let's have a discussion about the meeting schedule. I think this is the time to do it. Our goal has been to have regular bi-weekly meetings
Correct.
... that everyone knows when they are. One of the reasons and rationales for having a five-member board was to be able to have a quorum present when one or even two of us are not present. So, I strongly support the, every other week. And I think, Mike, your suggestion about a special meeting in conjunction with the other interested town boards to discuss the North Main Street proposal is a great one. We obviously can't schedule that till we've talked to the other groups.
Can we ask David, can we ask David to make that, or Diane to make those contacts?
Yeah, David or Diane, can you check on dates, probably...
Maybe like February 7th, or like one of the in-between weeks?
Yeah, February 7th, I think would, should give enough time for people to adjust their schedules and to publicize the meeting.
That gives us three weeks from now.
Yeah, so why don't we try and schedule this for February 7th?
And I kind of agree with whoever said that if you can't get all the other boards there, we should at least hold it, and, you know, maybe boards will send some people. I think we should hold it. We should open up that little wall there.
Yeah.
Have Rick show up with his TV camera and...
Yeah, have it well-publicized, so all the public knows.
Fight the press, and we'll be all set.
That's 14 business days away.
Okay. It's not a noticed public meeting, David. It's just a...
It's not. It's all 14 business days.
We're not having a hearing, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
It's just a meeting. We have nothing to have a hearing on.
Okay.
Terrific. Okay, do we...
Motion to approve the next meetings, including a meeting on February 7th for the sole purpose of discussing 41 North Main Street.
Can we say, or if there's a better time, David can suggest on?
Yeah, or with, yeah.
You know, or as further determined.
Or as further determined.
Yes.
After...
The 7th is really tough for me.
For you guys, so that's important. We'll just talk about you.
Can we technically do the 14th?
14th, we have a meeting.
Well, do you want to flip that?
We could. We could have our...
Selectment meeting on the 7th, and the special meeting on the 14th.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
We checked with Rick back there, because one of the things with this every-other-week meeting is that Dover has the meetings on the other Thursdays, and they were having an issue with televising both Dover and Sherburne at the same time. So that was one of the reasons we were setting it up this way.
Could we, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Thursday night, right?
It doesn't. But I also don't think we should drive our schedule by the, you know, the convenience of the TV cam. We could...
No, I know, I know.
Somebody could stand in here with an iPhone and film it, and put it online, and it'd probably be just as good as half the meetings we get.
Not as, no, not as good.
Not as good as Rick. Not the person, the technology. Not the person. We don't get sound. We don't get picture. I mean, we don't get sound and picture.
So, yeah, swap those then, Mike.
Yeah, let's swap. I think the idea of having our regularly-scheduled meeting moved to the 7th, and using the 4th.
14th for 41 North Main Street.
Right. Terrific. Is there a second on that consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Two.
Terrific. And Diane, nice job on the minutes, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Pat Cassell about a memorial area at Farm Pond for physically-challenged individuals.
I suppose to put this 10 inches from my...
You wouldn't have that.
I better follow rules. Doug loved Farm Pond and did an awful lot of work researching the history and everything at Farm Pond.
Pat, could you identify where you live in town? We're just doing that as a matter of routine.
I'm sorry. I'm Pat Cassell, 226 Western Avenue.
Thanks.
And for those who don't know, my husband passed away a year ago. And he did a lot of work for, doing the research on the history of Farm Pond and whatever. And I thought a fitting memorial would be a bench overlooking Farm Pond where people could sit and just enjoy the beautiful view of the pond. And in thinking about it, the park is open from April 1st to November 1st, basically. And most of the time, when there's nobody on staff, there's a, when there's no gate guard there, the gate is open, but the landing gate is not open. So handicap people, or physically-challenged, I like to call them, people cannot get through to the handicap access down below. So if they park in the upper parking lot, they can't see the pond. I mean, there's no way to get there. So what I want to try and do is create, from the handicap parking spaces at the top, in the main parking lot, so that people can come in all, from April 1st to November 1st, and create a ramp that would go up to the top of that hill by, it's just a little hill. There is a path there already. It goes down to the beach. And we clear a little space at the top of that hill and put a bench in where people, or a couple of benches, where people could just sit. And this, like I said, physically-challenged people. I have, I presented to them, I don't know if you could, a couple of photographs showing the landing and, yeah, and where the path would begin. And the, and I've already talked to Aronian Landscape, which was recommended by, by a friend from UMass, who will do the work. And this would be with private funds. It wouldn't, it wouldn't concern that the town would not have to put any money into it. I would be fundraising, probably, to do this. But, but basically, that's the project. And I think what I need is permission from the Selectmen to work on and generate this project, so that we could have a nice overview memorial for my husband.
Yeah, Eric, let me just ask one quick question. Pat, have you discussed this with the Friends of Farm Pond?
No. I haven't. I mean, I have discussed it with a bunch of people around town. Everybody seems to like the idea. And I think I wanted to first find out if it was possible, if the Selectmen would give me permission to do this, before I got involved in, you know, like the Friends or any, I've talked to people who are on the Friends, and, you know, whatever. But I think that everybody seems to think it'd be a great idea. It'd be an addition to Farm Pond. Sean is one I have to talk to, too. Because I'd love, I mean, I'd be doing some fundraising, but I'd also like whatever help from the town we could get in that, there's groups that cut trees, and, and, you know, maybe some of the, some of the stone, stones or gravel or something that you, that we could use from the town's supply or some, I don't know. It's just something to think about. But, but I'd love, I'd love to create it. And it'll be, it'll, it would be like you see on the, on the, the drawing I gave you. These are the photographs of the area. So you could see, I don't know, put them up. You could see the landing area where it would start, and it would just follow that path and go over the hill, and then just cut off from the path where it swerves to go down. It would just cut off and just clear a little area there and put a couple of benches in.
Eric?
Yeah, just that, that's what I understand. So basically, if you're standing in the main parking lot, let's say your back is to Lake Street, and you're looking at the parking lot.
Right.
It's the trail that's kind of to the left, not the ramp, and it's a trail to the left. And would that be permeable paved, per se, with proper ramps, so the ADA accessible?
According to the way it's designed, everything would be, yeah, permeable, and there'd be railings. And, and along the top, it doesn't come to the end of the, there's a big hill there. So it doesn't come to the end of the, you know, the top of the hill. It's a little farther in, and...
Makes like a platform that overlooks essentially.
A platform that, yes.
That overlooks the...
A patio. A patio kind of thing.
I mean, I like the concept, because honestly, right now, Farm Pond, it's almost impossible to make a beach ADA accessible. But there, people can go, they can look at the pond, they can have a proper access, a platform that a wheelchair can go on, or whatever it is. And I think that's kind of nice.
The thing is, I've talked to a number of handicap people. I mean, physically-challenged type of people. And, and they have said that, you know, they would love to go down and sit at Farm Pond. It's just gorgeous. But they don't want to go swimming. And, you know, the, the details of getting all the way down, and they don't like the beach. And there's a lot of people who like to go down and just sit and look at Farm Pond, but they don't like the beach arrangement. Why not allow more people that are physically-challenged to sit and enjoy, you know, it's a scenic wonder. It's just beautiful.
So, I think the concept is an admirable concept. We've had the Planning Board tell us that we don't have enough trails that are accessible in town. This would be an accessible trail. I don't feel prepared to make any kind of a decision on it tonight, because I see this as a concept, but I don't really see it as a, as a plan. And we're talking about a town asset, and we're talking about land. And, you know, I think before we gave a definitive kind of answer to it, I would want to see an actual engineered plan with slope and demonstration that it will meet the ADA. I also, in hearing you describe the problem, and the problem is that we have a gate at the top of the parking lot that people can't get down to the water off-season. This is $100,000 problem, partly because you have such a long run up that hill. And it's a somewhat steep hill. I don't know if a straight run like that actually will meet the access standards, but maybe you check that out.
It will.
Another, another potential solution is you move the gate, and you do a run from a lower point on the slope, and you just cut across the slope, and you're not cutting up, cutting up the hill. But, you know, there should be, there should be a more comprehensive look at this idea in terms of how you do it. Not, not to say it's not a good idea, but there's lots of ways to do things. And I just don't feel like I've got enough information based on this.
Well, let me just tell you that unfortunately, I couldn't bring the landscaper with me tonight. He had appendicitis. And...
Thank you for not bringing him.
Whatever. But in looking the whole area over, you don't want to create, opening the landing gate, because you've got boats coming and going, and there's a hill, and it's all ledge in there. And when, and that's why I asked him, and I took him down there, and we walked over it. The way he designed this, okay, it's about, like I said, 20 by 25-foot patio at the top. There is a slight grade in there. He will, he's designed it so that he's looking at all the handicap access. There's, you know, I mean, all the, all the requirements from ADA. So, there's nothing, except at the very beginning, we are considering moving the, where the ramp starts. There's a big, humongous rock and a tree. And if we could move the ramp out a little bit, or shift it a little bit, all the technical people would know, just shifting it, we wouldn't have to cut the tree or move the rock, you know. So, so I talked to him a little bit about that. But, but I, it will certainly be handicap accessible, I mean, all the way up. And there's a slight grade going up, but it's not as, it's not as deep as you...
Conservation will have to rule on this, right? This is, this is within...
Conservation, no. Because, no, because it's, I already checked with them, and they told me that, that it's more than 100 feet from the shore, and they don't really have to do that.
I think, I would want to hear, I think, as Mike said, I think this is a great idea. I think it's a little preliminary for us to give permission at this point. I think there needs to be more detail put into it. And I think Farm, we'd want to hear from Farm Pond Advisory and, and that group, just to have their blessing on it.
FPAC?
Yeah, I think it's a significant, I share your view, George, that it's a significant enough project. I mean, $100,000. I think having FPAC weigh in makes sense. And the other thought that I had, I love the idea, is that if, if it is ADA compliant, there may be state grant money that's available.
That's a good point.
I know that a couple of the reviews we've had of the state, and John can fill in the details, there was criticism, suggestion that we don't have enough, and there may be some state ADA money that's available. I mean, $100,000 is a lot of money to raise.
Paul has told us that he's approached by people all the time, asking him if we have projects that can be funded for accessibility, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, he's told us that, he's not here tonight, unfortunately, but he has told us at meetings that there are those opportunities, so...
Yeah, well...
That may be a way to do that.
Any fundraising opportunity, I would certainly look into. But I needed, I've already commissioned, you know, some of the preliminary, and he will come in with more drawings. All I need to know is what you need to go forward, because I know that he is, is looking at ADA. And I've talked to Karen, too, who might be able to donate some COA money that was raised, you know, for Doug, to this project, too. So, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but...
Yeah, I think it's...
What are the next steps, then?
Well, I would appreciate if you did run it by FPAC. I mean, I think that they're, that's, this is right within their...
I'm on FPAC, and I know that they are approving this. I mean, they are in favor of this. I just told them about it the last meeting, and...
I'd also suggest that you talk to Dave and work about, to see if there is any ADA
ADA.
state funding, because it could significantly reduce your fundraising needs.
Okay.
And I don't know, John, if you have any additional information you can share with Pat, but I share the view that we need more detailed information before we authorize a $100,000 project, and...
I really would like to see you study alternatives, Pat, that would have less paving at Farm Pond. This is the, you more than anybody else...
It's not paved.
Well, it's paved. It is. It's, it's altering the natural landscape. This is a natural asset. You, more than anyone else, has reinforced that with me and everybody else. So, if you're going to do something like this, which is a beautiful idea, and will bring the pond to a lot of different people, I would like to see you do it in the least invasive way possible, that still accomplishes what you're trying to do. And while this may be the perfect layout, it also might not be, from that standpoint. layout, it also might not be from that standpoint. And so I, I would like to see, uh, more of an engineered answer before we can really make a decision about it. Which would we would, we would expect of anybody doing any kind of project on town land.
Okay.
You know, other than a temporary thing. This is permanent.
Yeah, yeah.
And a few comments, Robert?
Would this, uh...
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue. Um, would this be a wooden platform or is this a on-grade?
Um, it wouldn't be a wooden platform. It would be, um, permeable, um, so that the, um, integrity of the hillside would not be, um, uh, altered. Um, the, the hillside is mostly, um, rock ledge. And so they're just going to have to, when they create the platform, it, it will be, um, permeable is the only way I know how to describe it so that the water can go through. And, and the hillside actually has a couple of trees and, and they would put some bushes on. And then from the edge, the, about a three-foot wall would be created so things won't roll off, you know, into it. But, um, I, I agree with you that, that I'm looking for more detailed stuff and I thought I'd have it today, but my contractor sort of, you know. So...
Sean?
Yeah, John Higley, fourteen South Brook Road, playing board. Um, we have, uh, already received a grant through the Complete Trees Program to put in an ADA compliant access to the Upper Charles Trail. And it's, I haven't seen, uh, your design yet, Pat, but I'd be happy to look at it so that, uh, we can see how that compares and fits in with that program. And there, and there are other programs.
Okay. So I just need to go around and talk a little bit more.
Yeah. Uh, Jeff, just a quick question, Pat. This chart that you sent us, are these vertical gradients, these green lines?
I think so. I don't know.
It looks like it.
It looks like it. And that looks like a pretty steep section. So the, the stone wall strikes me as it may have to be more than three feet because that occupies about...
It doesn't, I, I, I saw that too.
Yeah.
And, um, and I, he, he came with me to the, um, end of that area. And I thought, oh my God, this is like six or seven feet high and, you know, and then overlooks the po- no, it's back from that, that steep slope. It's, it's in the middle, it's back a little bit so that it, um, it's just an area that needs a few trees taken down to just level it a little bit. Um, and, um, uh, and the, it'll be permeable, you know, surface so that, um, uh, the water can get through. So that the trees holding up the, the edge of the cliff would, you know, would still be there and they wouldn't destroy that. I think maybe I need a contractor to explain better. Maybe I'm not explaining it right.
Jeff?
Oh yeah, Jeff Walbert, Surry Lane. I think also, I mean, Pat's got a great idea, but I think we need to look at Farm Pond in an integrated way. I know the yacht club...
Is moving over.
...is moving over and doing here. So I think, I know Jeannie King last night, they're gonna be moving in the lifeguard shed and they're gonna move on that house the year after that. So I think we need to look at a couple things. One is the, since the number of projects affected is maybe you have construction one time instead of having a December project. And you get an Eagle Scott project there for this range garden, but it, it literally is ledge a foot below. It looks like earth, solid ledge a foot beneath it. So it's very, very difficult to issue.
So we need to coordinate.
Yep. But Pat, what a wonderful idea and a wonderful memorial. Um, I, uh, I don't want to discourage you from trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars to do this, but I think there is more detail to be done. So thank you for, uh, all your work on this.
Okay. I would, I would do the project first and then raise.
Great, thanks, Pat.
Well, no, that's good to know too, that you're, you want to, you want to really move this as quickly as you can.
Well, yeah, I don't know. Um, well...
But that, but that's good for us to understand also, Pat. Thank you.
Okay.
Terrific. The next item on the agenda is the, um, financial and operational matters. Sharon, you want to queue this up for us?
Um, actually, I'll, I'll, it's just the reserve fund transfer that, that Sean's going to talk about for trees.
Terrific. And this is a reserve fund transfer for a hundred thousand dollars for...
Tree.
Sean, do you want to, uh, give us a quick presentation of what, what you're going to be doing with this money?
Well, I don't have much of a presentation other than, uh, the budget told fifty thousand dollars for tree contract services, uh, for this year, which was up from thirty the year before. Uh, as predicted, we far surpassed that already, uh, due to the large amount of trees that have, uh, died over the past couple of years. Uh, most of the tree work you see in town right now is being done by Stanley Tree for Eversource. But there's areas of town where obviously they don't have the highest priority, uh, as far as Eversource, such as Greenwood Street where there was no power lines. Uh, so that was on our dime.
And the hundred thousand dollars that's requested would cover just roughly what percentage of trees that aren't going to be handled by Eversource? Just, can you give us a sense of the overall?
Or like the number? Is it like a hundred trees? How do I know?
Uh, yeah, it's close to it. To put a percentage on how many dead trees we have right now, I, I can't really do. I mean, we estimated early in the year that there was a million dollars worth of trees to take down. It was in excess of five hundred. Stanley, Eversource is hitting maybe almost half that list, but that list probably increased by fifty percent.
Right.
Because that was dead this spring.
So based on that lot, that initial accounting, it would be only addressing a hundred thousand out of the five hundred thousand we think needs to be...
Right.
Handled. And seventy thousand of it is for tree service and thirty thousand is for traffic details?
Yeah, the large trees, we're running about, close to three to one on, uh, you know, what a day costs for a crane crew to take a tree down and the details that are associated with it, whether you're closing the road or not.
So we're really spending thirty percent of this money on traffic details?
Right.
For streets that have no traffic or very little?
Some do, some don't.
Right. My street, my street doesn't.
That doesn't really move the needle much, whether there's traffic or not.
I know.
How does it, in fact, I guess, do you still have to have the traffic detail? Like when you closed Greenwood for a few days when you had all those trees taken down? If you have the road closed, is there still a traffic detail or can put up the cones?
Actually, there's more.
There's more?
Right.
I was gonna say, if they have the road closed...
That's actually Greenwood. We didn't have a choice.
Right.
Those, those trees are so big, it takes a big crane to get them down, which takes up both sides of the road. You couldn't possibly, you walk around the crane, that was about it. So the road had to be closed.
And they still had to have a traffic detail at the end of the road even though the road was closed?
We had it at either end and in the middle. So there was three instead of two.
Okay. Well, I have a question for Sharon on this.
Yeah.
With the, this hundred thousand, where, where are we on the reserve fund and how much does that leave?
All right. So our reserve fund was three hundred thousand. We've only had a transfer of about three thousand so far. So we are...
So we'll still have a little under two, two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Has Advisory looked at this yet? Or are we looking at it first and then going to them?
They are looking, they're gonna look at it next week.
Terrific. Well, those of us driving on, uh, and through downtown today recognize the importance of the details on, uh, the number of the streets. Stanley was, uh, quite a good backup at two, two in the afternoon. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer request?
Can I ask a question? I want to ask a question about details, which is, is this something that every town in Massachusetts faces or is this just our contract?
No, details are...
I only work in this town.
I can tell you that.
You may be the wrong guy to ask.
It's, it's an issue for me.
I had one project that had over two million dollars in details.
That's the one, that's one project. That's in a total, that's not the question I asked.
Multi-year project.
Okay, the question I asked though is, should we be doing it a different way? Because this shocks me that it's that much money, actually. It's, it's basically fifty percent as much as we're spending to take the trees down, which is what the town really needs to have happen.
Right.
But can we, can we do it any other way? Because I know a few years, wasn't there a state...
I don't know. That's what, that's the question I'm asking.
They tried to say, can you get non-police flagged people and that was voted down. The police union, right?
I thought they passed a flagger. So they actually do flaggers on the certain rows have, um, below a certain threshold in traffic count and speed limit. You actually can do flaggers. The issue is, is that when you go to, um, prevailing wages, it costs the same as a detail. It's around forty, fifty bucks an hour. So I mean, it's, it's gonna...
For a flagger?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that doesn't save us any money.
Doesn't save any money.
Well, guys...
It's, it's the money. It's not the identity of the people. It's just the money.
Oh, whether you actually have to have a detail if it's on a road that has a certain level of traffic.
There's more to it than, than the rock cost. Because with, with, using details, you have to go by their schedule. It's not necessarily the same as a work schedule. You know, if you guys want to show up at seven in the morning and work on a side street somewhere, you can't necessarily, sometimes you can get a detail, sometimes you can't. You gotta go by, like, seven-hour shifts to try to get the details. There's a lot to the logistics of it.
I want to answer your question. I think that is relevant of how much is spent. Because basically, any work within the right of way, the standard of care is to get a detail. I mean, to not do it, I don't know what they'll do to expose your liability. Now, sometimes we do do work, uh, detail if someone doesn't show up. And then you, you continue working if it seems reasonable and safe to do. The end of a cul-de-sac is a classic example. But I think it'd be a certain liability if you never even called for one, if you didn't arrange one. I think they'd just be, it'd be suspect. I don't know. I think it'd be exposing to certain liabilities. Let's put it, it's a standard of care. So at no point have we ever, in my work, ever really entertained it.
Well, if using flagmen doesn't...
Save any money.
Save any money, then...
Yeah, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It's the money. It's the fact that we can't close a road down, for example, and do the work.
Yeah, like, in Illinois, the flagmen were my high school buddies making minimum wage.
Well, they were probably making a lot of money too.
Yeah, no, they were not.
Unless they have Massachusetts prevailing wages.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the reserve, any comments in the audience? Robert?
Sure, I'll throw one. Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue. Massachusetts is the only state in the Union that requires police officers at this type of detail. So if in the future you're trying to reduce costs, you might talk to your legislature to get, like all the other forty-nine states?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's probably something people are doing, but, I mean, for me, it's just how do we logistically make it so it's not thirty percent of our reserve fund transfer used for something that's really a, a protective service. It's not, it's not part of the actual service we need done. We need, we need public safety, but I don't know that we always need it on all the roads that this is happening to the extent that you just talked about, Sean, so.
I'll move to approve the reserve fund transfer for a hundred thousand.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sharon.
Sean, you're gonna come back and ask for more money later on this too because we've got...
I primed you with that, yeah?
That's what I'm saying. Well, you should. I, I'm, I'm gonna urge you...
I'm gonna move from here to there.
I'm gonna urge you to do that. I don't mean tonight. I mean, I'm gonna urge you to do that because you still drive down the street and there's branches that are clearly dead, hanging over the road. It's not trees necessarily. Sometimes the trees are fine and there's just a big dead branch that nobody's dealt, done anything with for years. Talk about li-
Stick around, it's later in the evening.
Talk about liabilities. Good, that's great.
The budget.
I thought that all this was just to repaint your trucks if you changed the name to DPW, but this is...
It is. We're gonna go to Orange too, so we gotta repaint.
I think Sean and his crew are gonna volunteer to do that, though.
Yeah, okay.
Terrific. Next item on the agenda are warrant articles. The first one is the accessory apartment zoning, uh, bylaw of section three point two-two. Mr. Higley?
Hello, John Higley, fourteen South Brook Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. Um, I think you've got a copy of the proposal. This is, um, the, this is a warrant article to amend the, uh, zoning accessory apartment, existing accessory apartment bylaw, uh, section three point two-two. Um, and, and, uh, the reason we're, uh, proposing this warrant article is because, um, of the comments that we got, we received, uh, during the plan, during the town meeting and some discussion related to that. Um, the first thing that you see is, is, um, language in, in, uh, three point two-two A. And I'll just read that, uh, "Single-family detached dwelling together with accessory buildings containing in, uh, in the dwelling or in, uh, existing accessory building." And we're striking existing accessory. So we'll just read "in an accessory building" and we're striking the date. Um, the current language says "as of April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen." So we're striking the date, so it would then read dwelling, uh, "in the dwelling in, uh, an accessory building, um, one additional housekeeping unit provided." So that's, that's, uh, really to clarify what was discussed during town meeting where there was confusion of whether it had to be existing or not. And so we've already, uh, the, the town has already, um, permitted the conversion of accessory building that, that was, uh, being built as new. And we talked about it and in the planning board decided it's a good idea to, uh, change the wording to enable that. The purpose of the, of the article, of the, of the existing bylaw is to enable, um, uh, an accessory apartment either for the homeowner or for the homeowner to have, uh, uh, some company and perhaps some, some, uh, additional income. Um, we have, we, we modified it last year, at our last town meeting. And, um, and this, so this is, this is really to clarify, uh, uh, the issues I just described.
Sean, what was the rationale for the, um, April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen cutoff date?
Um, the rationale was, it was in the original accessory apartment. So, um, and there was, uh, uh, questioning of the language in the original. We left the original language. Um, and then in, in, um, it created so much confusion during the discussion at town meeting. Um, it was, the, the original idea was to limit it only to existing buildings as of a particular time. Um, and that created so much confusion. Plus, the, the reality is we're not building an awful lot of new barns on, on, uh, properties. So, um, so it really didn't serve much purpose. We, we have several accessory apartments in town, um, and they're, you know, duly noted and, um, it's, it's not gonna make a big difference. So why, why put it in there?
So, Jeff, can you explain the change in eight? The, the rationale for the changing that language, putting the word rental in there?
In the, in...
The last, eight, yeah.
Yeah, so reads "such unit may not be rented" in the old language. So the existing language says "to any single party for rental periods." The, again, that was, that was language that we talked about, uh, really was to prevent, um, daily rental of, of property. Um, of an, so don't build an accessory apartment if you want to rent it every day to a different person. So you're turning it into a, um, a, a different type of, uh, potential imposition on a butters and things like that. So, um, so it was, just strike it so that it's, uh, not to be rented for a, a rental period. Um, strike out to any single party. The, to any single party, I think the, the intention was to say, uh, was, was not to, it was, the intention was to say, um, so you, you don't rent it to a different, a different renter every day. Um, but then we, um, that's already covered and it created confusion, a single party. What does that really mean? How do you define that?
Yeah, I was wondering, you added the word rental and I wasn't sure why it may not be rented for a rental period of less than thirty days. If that's...
We could, we don't need...
I, I didn't know if that was intended.
If it's redundant, we don't need it.
Well, it's redundant, but I also didn't know if it was intended to distinguish it from some other kind of, uh, I mean, you know, can, can you sell the right to drink the water but not charge them to live there? I don't know. Um, the...
It's probably redundant.
Okay. Well, I mean, well, that's one, one question. I don't know why you couldn't just say, you know, for example, Airbnb, weekend rentals. Well, you know, say what you mean and, and make it really clear to the public so nobody has any question about what, what the intent is with this.
Well, we talked about that and thought, I don't know, what, what's tomorrow gonna bring? If it's not Airbnb, are there others? And we didn't want to get involved in trying to list...
Or similar, or similar programs.
We could.
That rent for less than thirty days. I don't know. I ju- I just, I feel like you don't want to create loopholes. And if you really mean, if that's really what you're trying to do here, it's probably better to say it. I, I've read a lot of these and none of them are that clear. And, you know, this is as good as any of them, but I think, I think clarity's better.
Um, so, um, okay. So we can Airbnb or equivalent. Um, so, um, okay, so we can Airbnb or equivalent.
Just curious, when they, if someone creates a, um, accessory rental, so they, oh, they don't have it, then, then they create it, they have it, does that count in our denominator for affordable housing?
Um, yes.
Okay.
It does. Um, it'll, it, as I say, the, the accessory apartment, uh, bylaw does a really great thing for the, for, for Sherbourn, for citizens in Sherbourn, um, and they do count, they already count. Uh, but, enabling, uh, somebody to stay in town, enabling someone to stay in town because they can get some additional revenue, or to, they can have some, some, uh, company as, as they age, or to even live in the apartment and then rent out the house. It's really a, a good way to, uh, keep some people in town, add some diversity.
Sean, the other change, I don't, I don't think I heard you mention it, was the deletion of the occupancy limit of three persons?
Right, yep, yep, uh, the, the line currently reads "such unit shall be occupied by not more than three persons." And, um, that, again, that was left over from the, uh, old, original, and, and we probably should've struck in it before, we talked about it, it clearly created some discussion, so we're striking it now to, actually, it reduces the town's risk of, of a legal claim. Um, if, if a couple has a baby, and then you have to evict them, because now it's three, um, then, um, or if they have one child and they have another, evicting them, that's illegal. So, it would be a risk to the town in terms of somebody, a lawsuit we'd lose if we decided to enforce it, you know, and if we decided to go to, to battle it, I don't think we'd do either, but why not just strike it? Because it's really not a, a legal thing, if it's a handicap and they need, uh, they need assistance, you don't wanna, um, that, that would be discriminatory, so it's, it's, it's not needed, and so we struck it just to actually reduce the town's li, you know, risk to some, uh, complaint.
What's the sense of the board? Do we wanna wait for the, uh, the final language on section eight, or are we prepared to, uh...
I think we should vote it.
To include it in the warrant.
Yeah.
That's my inclination, but-
Yeah.
Um, just as an aside, there is, I think, a misunderstanding of the whole warrant process, Addie May put a very nice posting on Nextdoor Sherbourn describing it. By placing town meeting acts as the legislative body for the town, by placing a warrant on, it doesn't indicate whether this board or any other board is gonna support it. We will make recommendations, they're only recommendations to the legislative body, to the town meeting, so advisory and, um, the, uh, each department and the, the select board will provide a recommendation that can get voted up or down. The elderly affordable, uh, bylaw, which was the Pulte Project, had that all built in, it's part of the normal process, so this vote to include it on the warrant is no indication of whether anyone on this board supports it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add to that, um, any zoning bylaw requires hearings, and we, the planning board hasn't had a hearing yet, so, uh, there's a lot of process that goes through before the planning board votes to support it, um, and before, uh, that recommendation, also the advisory hearing, uh, so it's all, I agree with your, um, comment.
No, Addie May said it better, so.
Carol.
Carol.
Um, Chuck, uh, Carol Marmol. Chuck, since you mentioned Addie May's article, I would just like to point out that one of the things she said is that a warrant article may be withdrawn at any time, and that's actually not possible. Once a warrant article is placed on the warrant, the warrant is signed, the article is there, it cannot be withdrawn. Boards and committees can withdraw their support, someone could withdraw the motion at town meeting, but a warrant article cannot be withdrawn.
Yeah, and there are two other items we've talked about at previous meetings that, um, I wanna make sure they get posted. Carol, you put together a very nice summary of an overall, an overview of town governance and town process, and Corey Lincoln did a terrific one summarizing the procedures and the process at the annual town meeting. If we've not posted those on the website, they should be, because those are very short, succinct, and accurate summaries. I had posted them once on Nextdoor Sherbourn a couple of years ago, but I would commend them, they were very good summaries of the process. So, I'm sorry, is there a motion to put this on the warrant?
Yeah, I made that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks, John. Now, the rail trail? Wanna join me, Rob?
Um, okay, so this, um, this is, uh, an opportunity. Um, uh, so this is an opportunity to extend the rail trail in your package, you've got a, um, a description of some of the issues, and you've got some maps. Um, the trail, uh, that's built through, uh, and finished through Milford and Holliston is about fourteen miles?
Uh, approximately, yeah.
Uh, by the way, I'll introduce Rob Wolf, who's, uh, the former chair of the bicycle committee, when we had a bicycle committee, Rob's also a member of Sherbourn Forest and Trails, and he's been-
And do you know, and do you know Rob's home address?
Thirty-one Sari Hill Lane.
And, um, um, and has been following the Upper Charles Trail and, and other trails, but, um, so the planning board asked him to, to help us out with this, so, um, uh, this is an opportunity to extend the trail, which currently goes from the Holliston Town Line north up to Whitney Street. Um, the town acquired that property, um, to connect, uh, to the completed trails through Holliston and, um, Milford, um, and now we have the opportunity, CSX is the railroad company that owns the property north of, uh, Whitney Street, all the way up to Framingham, and this, and they've expressed interest in, in selling that portion of the, of the rail bed to Sherbourn, so, um, so that, that's the opportunity. The, um, status right now is that, um, uh, the state's, uh, environmental bond bill has been approved with, um, uh, the, the funds authorized for Sherbourn to spend money to acquire the, uh, CXX property north of Whitney Street and convert it to a rail trail. Um, and, so our warrant article says, "We would like to authorize the select board to acquire the CXX X property north of Whitney Street and convert it to a rail trail contingent on the environmental bond funds and potential donations and grants, um, be, be, uh, used for that purpose to..." And, so that's, so we have an opportunity. The, the issue is that contingency, the real issue is that it's, um, uh, now that it's been authorized, not, the, the next step is for, um, that money to, uh, be made available through some entity, some department in the state government, or some entity that has a capital budget, that's willing to allocate it to us, instead of just something else. So, um, it sounds great to know that we've got seven-hundred thousand dollars that's been approved, um, in the environmental bond bill. It's a, that's a great step, but it's a much bigger step then to find, uh, uh, somebody with a bucket of money that they wanna allocate to us. But that's where we are, so that's, that's the real opportunity. Um, wanna go through the package?
Um, do you wanna talk also about the, the need for the appraisal?
Um, yeah, so the, um, the, um, the process steps that you, we outlined here include, um, confirming the environmental bond bill award, we've done that, it's confirmed. The, uh, the next step in acquisition includes things like the, an appraisal, um, and sometimes you can enter into a purchase and sale discussion contingent on things like an environmental survey, engineering survey, title search. This would require an A and R to separate the parcel, um, uh, from the CXX land that extends, uh, north into Framing, into Framingham, um, and then the caught, the legal costs, so, a negotiating purchase and sale. So, there's some obstacles and things that has to happen. The way the environmental bond authorization is worded, um, if we find, if we find a source of the, the capital budget that would be awarded to us, that can all be used for all of this. But without knowing that, uh, step, we put in, uh, we, we put in wording that, uh, that will fund the appraisal, um, um, and we, we haven't specified the amount here. Last, uh, the amount that was, the appraisal that was used for the acquisition of the, uh, land in Sherbourn and in Holliston was something about five thousand dollars, roughly. Um, we got a quote from somebody that said fifteen thousand dollars, it's one quote. So, that's where we stand with it right now, but we don't know really, we don't really know. Um, it's, it's, uh, possible that, uh, that Framingham, uh, would participate in that.
What are we, what are we appraising it for?
Um, to agree on a price, to buy, to buy it from, from the railroad company.
Do you have any idea what that, an estimate of what that value is, and, and what did we pay for the section from Whitney down to Holliston?
Yeah, um, we paid forty-eight thousand, and it was two-point-two-six acres, I think.
I will say, though, that that is, that is by far the lowest paid of any of the known rail trails. I know we extrapolated Sudbury, Sudbury has a similar one, when they did the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, it goes through a large, largely wetland there, and when we extrapolated that per acre price to this section here, it was like over a million, so it was, it's gonna be interesting to see how they get to an equivalence, and Natick ruined it for everyone when they purchased the, where they paid, uh, six-point-three million just for the right-of-way and, uh, for the Kitchell Rail Trail, and then-
Is, is, I mean, isn't the question whether the CSX wants to hang on to it and do nothing with it, or they wanna have it used by somebody else? I mean, why, why are we thinking about paying? There's, there's no market for this land, what would the market be?
Right, and they'll let it sit, because ultimately, they're a public health company that has a fiduciary responsibility to their shareholders, and they're gonna try to get the maximum value for it. That's really what it is, so, we can meet with them, if you don't agree, we walk, and then, uh, then it doesn't sell, and they're among the thousands of properties they have around Massachusetts, they're trying to dispense, it just becomes another one on the books.
Yeah, we, we can just wait, same, same as the last piece. The, an important part of this is, once they abandon it, um, then there's a, the clock is ticking in the rail banking, um, the keeping, uh, the federal government gives substantial incentives to keep rail beds intact, and rail trails are a great way to keep it intact, so there's funds made available, uh, to enable that, and the, uh, Holliston's funding in part is contingent on this, uh, rail, on their part of the rail bed, remaining in, in connection to an active rail line. That's a requirement for this federal funding, and, and the, uh, connection, the part that Sherbourn bought actually enabled Holliston to get about a million dollars in funding. So, and, and I can say there's a lot of Sherbourn people that are enjoying the already existing trail in, in Holliston and Milford, so-
Does this mess it up if we sell this?
Huh?
If, if we bought this and turned it into a rail trail, does that mess up their?
No, actually, we actually protect it, we actually-
Because we connect on the other end, is that the idea?
Uh, no, it connects to an active line on the other end, that's what's critical.
On the other end, okay.
So, so if we buy it, um, then that protects what, what Holliston is dependent on, some of its least. Um, and it, and it also allows us to, to, uh, improve it into the same condition as the Holliston part, which is magnificent, and, and, uh, will have ADA compliant access and all that stuff. So, it's really a tremendous asset once it's completed. Um, that's, that's part of it. The, another, another aspect is, um, that, um, if we don't buy it, and they, they just sit on it, if they pull up the, the tracks and abandon it, then it reverts, um, then it's no longer active line, and we have the same problem with that rail banking again.
Where's the active CSX line? Is it behind Odessa, on the west side of Odessa?
Yes, on the west side, it's, it's, um, um, it really goes right from that bridge and, uh, the, the bridge on Whitney Street, straight north to Framingham, it goes on the west side of, uh, the Barber Reservation, and, uh, can, it, another great aspect, I'm really, uh, Rob can, will correct me, I hope, on, um, but the, the Bay Circuit Trail, we used to, um, back in our day, uh, the Bay Circuit Trail, uh, well, not, not that far back, but, um, the Bay Circuit Trail used to, uh, go from Ashland on the cart path from one-twenty-six, um, and then go straight across the railroad tracks, and, and it was, and then continue through the Barber Reservation and on, uh, through Sherbourn, and it's a wonderful, uh, Bay Circuit Trail that encompasses metropolitan Boston. Um, that, that a, access across the railroad tracks was not allowed, it's not allowed. So, they actually had to abandon that and go out to one-twenty-six, and then across on Whitney Street, and then, and then, uh, connect through, through, uh, uh, the, uh, power lines, I think. Um, but that is, so, hiking on the Bay Circuit Trail on one-twenty-six and, and Whitney Street's not a great route. So, this, by acquiring this, this will allow that, uh, the, the original concept of the Bay Circuit Trail going through Sherbourn, to go straight from, along that cart path in Ashland, uh, across, uh, presuming that the Sherbourn Rural Land Foundation and Upper Charles Conservation Land Trust approve it going through their, their properties, then it will go into Barber and continue on, and it'll be a terrific, uh, restoration of the original idea of the Bay Circuit Trail.
And as it goes into Framingham, actually, it goes through what they call the North Yard, and CSX is looking to dispense of that, and the ultimate goal is actually provide, really, a lot of the Metro West non-vehicular access to the commuter rail, which is actually kind of in the big picture, one of the things-
Yeah, th, this trail is a terrific local trail that would, in, ultimately, the plan is for it to loop all the way from Milford up to Hopkinton, um, Ashland, and then into Sherbourn, but then going north up to Framingham, connect to several other trails, including the Bruce Freeman Trail, you could go all the way to Lowell, once, once that's completed. Um, and the central, uh, trail that goes east-west, and, as, as Eric said. So, it's, it's a long-term legacy that really benefits the entire region, and, and this is a, uh, this is a terrific opportunity. If we can acquire it and construct it at no cost to Sherbourn, we, we have that potential here.
One of the bullet points you listed was the, uh, resolved vernal pool south of Whitney Street, can you explain what that's about?
Yeah, uh, the part that we acquired has a vernal pool, a certified vernal pool, that was certified during the, uh, time we were, uh, testing or, or negotiating the, uh, development on Whitney Street. And it's a, it's a man-made rail bed that's, that's, uh, may or may not, uh, we suspect, according to today's standards, we, we believe it would never be certified as a vernal pool. Um, so, there's a, there's a, a process of having it examined to see if it could be decertified, alternatively, um, to go around it, or to build a, uh, uh, a, a trail over it, you know, a raised trail. So, there's different alternatives, um, that could be done, um, so that's, that's part of the process. The, the ADA compliant, uh, access from Whitney Street to the trail that we already talked about, there's already a small parking lot and bypass around that to get, to connect to the trail and go south down to Holliston, that's, that's already been negotiated, approved, and funded.
And that's an easement, isn't it?
It's an easement that will construct a trail on, uh, using the Complete Streets program. Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'd just point out a few things, and I think this map, the, the photo from Google is in the, your packet, so you can see Whitney Street at the bottom, the rail bed is sixty-six feet wide there, which is pretty much the width in Holliston, and then as you go up, you see the fields of the Barber Reservation, and somewhere in around there, it starts to widen out, winds out into sidings, which are eventually like eight or ten tracks wide, and then, um, where you see this light green line, which is the power lines going across, that's around where the Framingham border is, um, and then the sidings all necked down again, till finally there are a single track up here, and, um, then it starts to open up again, and you can see just the tip of the Framingham rail yard sidings and, and work yard up there. And what CSX has actually offered is to sell the whole section from around, uh, you can see Bates Road and Framingham, down to Whitney, which is, uh, twenty-six acres, I think. It's just over twenty-
It's, just over 20 of it is in Sherburne. So we could either do something where Sherburne and Framingham cooperate on buying the whole piece at once with the two towns acting separately or we could, if Framingham is not ready to move ahead, but Sherburne is and can get the funding, we can ask the railroad to split it and just start at the border.
Truvik, any questions up here?
Can I move, we go to add it to the warrant?
Is there a second?
Should it be a dollar figure in it or is it?
Well, I was going to say, the one thing I think we have to have, obviously, is the dollar figure, not to exceed figure for the appraisal fee. I'm comfortable adding it with-
Adding it to the warrant list and then clarify the warrant before we sign the warrant. That includes a dollar amount because a $15,000 appraisal sounds ridiculous to me, but 5,000?
Me too.
Seems in line with what we see in the real estate world, so. Is there, is there, I guess it's going through swamp, but it just seems like we really don't need 116 feet in width to do a rail trail. That's a really fat tire bike. That's not something we would, we would ever need. And I don't know, depending on how it gets funded, you know, do we have an opportunity to either sell excess or donate it in some way? Also, that width is where people would have dumped stuff probably, right? I mean, the stuff that, the stuff, you know, you deal with what's under the track, but if you, every additional foot of land you're picking up is potential liability. So is, is there any way to carve this up so you get your rail trail and the rest of it, you can say, yes, CSX, you can have it or we can sell it to a butters or I don't know? And does the funding source affect that? I know I made the motion, but this is just a question.
Will we be a butter anyway, John?
Some of it.
Some of it, we are, yeah.
A butter up in that section you're talking about is mostly Rural Land Foundation, but down there, Whitney Street, there's some private butters. And then basically, most of it is either Town of Sherburne or Rural Land Foundation on both sides. And then there's just a few commercial, there's one private and a couple of commercial butters right up at the very north end.
I was going to say, there are a couple of private houses up there that-
Uh, no.
Suzie, aren't you in a butter?
Yeah. No.
That's the train.
Rural land is behind me.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see the, the white on the map here is the private. And you can see the dark green is the rural land.
I mean, the one thing you can do actually to generate revenue, especially if you buy it in fee, I don't know how much you can dice it up because of the reversibility clauses that come with rail trail purchases, but I believe you can actually lease like utility rights, like if someone wants to do it, like a gas company or something like that.
There's been some ideas. I'm not, I don't, so one idea-
Well, maybe Rural Land would like to widen their holdings there.
Yeah.
Never know.
Well, Rural Land paid $1,000 an acre for their holdings, so.
Perfect, that's, so why do we need an appraisal?
So, you know, there's, when they appraise it, there's normally, there's an across-the-fence method, which hopefully would return an extremely low value. But then, of course, they also do a comparable sales, which, right, you know, on the other side of Whitney Street, there's our sale for something in excess of $20,000 an acre and then there's the one that Eric had talked about for far more than that.
And wasn't there a substantial donation from Mike and Suzie Humphrey a number of years ago behind their property? I thought that they donated.
Under acres, I think so.
Wow.
It was a big number.
Suzie?
Yeah, Suzie, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I have concerns. I don't know how they do it in the other towns. I've seen the trails. I don't personally walk them, but I've seen them. Access for motorbikes and, you know, because I've lived for 26 years in my location and I know how many bikes I hear roaring up and down those tracks. They come out of Bates Road, there's a couple of other trails they come through. I've seen a four-wheel come out of Washakam Road, which is where it ends up in Framingham and it goes shoot right down the tracks. And so now, because that is in such an uninhabited neighborhood, so there are no direct butters seeing all those as compared to through Holliston and Milford where there's somebody to say, hey, there's a bike on the, they're out there all the time. So I don't know, I mean, are we just picking up another headache? Because we know that the police, and I think the police ought to go through and see how many reports they had of complaints of bikes down there.
It's interesting you say that.
Conservation has a big issue with people with their access getting in there with the dirt bikes onto the Barber Reservation and all the illegal deer tree stands that are in there. And there's a lot of activity in there that you're going to be opening it up to.
Well, it's interesting you say that because what they're discovering is more and more of rail trails, they're always abandoned trails. And to be honest, like Framingham had one where there was, there were some nefarious activities. Then they built a rail trail out of it and it goes away because now people are using, legitimate people are using it. So people who are going out there to either hide or to do something otherwise are a lot less likely to do it when there's a fair amount of actual pedestrian access to it.
I think that's the Jane Jacobs theory of safety, the more traffic you have, the safer it is.
I think that's very much held up by the experience in Holliston. They were having a lot of dirt bike activity and a lot of ATVs running around on it when it was just an unimproved dirt path where people are actually technically trespassing when they do that, but it was happening all the time. There was illegal dumping, there was construction equipment parked on it. And once they, you know, started enforcing this, they, they built it up, they did a wonderful job of finishing it and now it's a, it's a very nice town asset. And we don't see that kind of misuse out there as far as I know.
And the suggestion I've been making in terms of the funding was if you have a firm quote that you're happy with, you know, use that or else put a not to exceed number in. But I, I don't think the town meeting wants to see this without having some sense of what it's going to be.
Yeah.
You had a move, right? All in favor of the motion to add it to the warrant?
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the informational presentation on 41 North Main Street. Andrew, are you?
He's, they're out in the hallway, I think.
I guess the only thing I wanted to confirm, since we're not making a decision on it, I just want you to limit or eliminate public comment and then everyone can come on the 14th and have a full public comment session.
41 North, Lanny Rubin, 26 Elliott Street. This is a public issue at a public meeting advertised as such.
Wasn't I advertised?
I object to the prohibition of comment. Hopefully, nobody will wander off to the sunrise, but every part of the conference has been to allow some comment. We understand that you're going to have a large forum of comment.
Think we need to allow comment?
I object to the restriction of a public meeting, publication.
We don't have the obligation to allow comment on anything unless it's a public hearing. I mean, intended public comment is either a hearing or to, to influence or, you know, to affect our decision. If there is no decision being made-
We're not making any decisions tonight.
You know, we're not going to vote anything, we're not going to make a decision. I mean, you know, and there's going to be ample opportunity to have public comment as well. And, because I do appreciate Mike's concern about, like, he wants to make sure that, you know, we're not writing out a lot of these fine tunes and to go down that certain, that certain path. I mean.
Truvik, let me, I'd like to hear the informational presentation and then decide that typically we don't, we'll take one or two comments on, not in a hearing setting, but my understanding is that, from what you said earlier, Eric, that there may be some, a fair amount of new information here.
Yes.
And we've agreed on limiting it to 15 minutes?
That should work, yes. All right. Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Good. Hello, again, I'm Andrew Consiglio from Civicco Development. I'm the consultant for the Lubarskis, the owners of 41 North Main Street and the parcels along Hunting Lane that we'll, we'll talk about tonight. So there's some new information we do want to share tonight. So we'll go through the Sherburne Square development plan for both the east and west side of the tracks. For those of you just sort of joining us today for the first time, I'll sort of give an overview of the development very quickly and then kind of jump into some of the new information that's going to be provided. Thank you. So we'll go through the development plan and then talk about the infrastructure and the financing proposals. Also, talk a bit about the benefits and the concerns of the project that we've, that we've heard throughout the process and then talk about potential next steps. So this is the overall plan that we have come up with. Recently, we've been sort of holding, you know, what we were planning to do with the Hunting Lane property and some of the information on the, on the North Main Street parcels, just because we were trying to figure out financially if certain elements worked and also because we wanted to listen to the community in the, in the past number of meetings. And I think that really helped shape the plan that we're, that we are presenting now. And so hopefully, in the next coming weeks and months, we can continue that constructive dialogue between the town, us, and the community to keep driving the plan in a positive direction. So pointing up at the map to orient, orientate the plan here, these are the train tracks here. This is the North Main Street parcel right here, so that's North Main Street right there. This is the historic house, right there. And then this is the six acre, six and a half acre land that we'll call sort of east of the tracks. And then west of the tracks is the 36-plus acre parcel of land here, which is comprised of around four or five different parcels that the Lubarskis own. This is an existing house right here and this is also an existing house right here. And the idea is that, we'll dig into this a little bit more in detail on the next slide, but the parcel over by Hunting Lane will be a subdivision of 14 homes. There are wetlands that comprise of this portion of the site right here, but with all the setbacks necessary and the buffers that are required, we are changing this, we are proposing to change this from two acre zoning to one acre zoning. We will keep the existing house here on two acre zoning right here, but the idea is that some of the, most of this right here is two acre zoning right now and we'd be proposing to make it one acre zoning. To get into the enlarged plan of the 41 North Main Street parcel, the idea would be to have the market still and actually incorporate it into the historic house. So the historic house is right here and then we'd, we'd put the, the market attached to that as sort of a sensitive addition to the historic house. It would all be within the same scale. And then the parking would be right behind the market to allow, you know, not to be parking along the street and the market would shield the parking. And then the idea would be around, would be the assisted living facility would still be here and then we would add a memory care facility onto the assisted living, whereas before we were proposing more of a rental housing scheme. This is, this is more of a, the whole, the project really is assisted living now and a market. So the market is very similar to kind of, I don't know if you've ever been to York, Maine, they have Stonewall Kitchen there. That was a historic site where they had a house on there that they actually added on to. And it was, it was an idea of adding on a, adding on to a historic building in a very nice way and thoughtful way. And it actually, I think, celebrated historic preservation and brought kind of people there and, with a cafe and shops. It allowed people kind of witness what can be done with historic preservation. So I think with, the idea with attaching to the historic house, I think we can really create a sort of an educational and thoughtful way of incorporating historic, sort of educate the public about historic preservation. That's very similar to what they did here. The assisted living facility would be no more than three stories. The memory care would be one story, so it'd be accommodation spread throughout the site. These, the one up here is North Bridge up in Burlington. This is an example of the style of architecture that could be done. This is also one here in, in a few towns over. I forget exactly where this, this is, in, I forget exactly where, but I'll have to look it up, but this is a local project here that is done assisted living in a very vernacular style of New England that we could propose as well. But all that would be worked out with the boards and the commissions to make sure that we're, it fits within the character of Sherburne. So the proposed development in terms of the uses and the density, there's a 6,000, 500 square foot historic house that will be converted into a restaurant café. This will actually convert it back into its original use as sort of a café tavern. A 9,000 square foot addition to the historic house for a proposed food market. The assisted living facility and memory care facility would be between 90 and 120 assisted living units and then 40 to 60 memory care. And this is a range because we would be bringing in an operator that would be working with the town to determine how many units are appropriate for the site, depending on their operation. And then across the Hunting, across in the Hunting Lane parcel would be the 14 single family homes. The idea about the, the infrastructure has been brought up and we've been working with the town and trying to solicit feedback on sort of the best way of going about to bring municipal water and sewer to the town. And, you know, one way is trying to not have the town pay for it directly and actually do it through the tax revenue created from the assisted living operator. So the idea would be through, kind of going through the steps here. The developer builds the town center, we build a town center, municipal water and sewer, which is estimated to be about $2.8 million cost. The developer finances the cost through the construction loan. The developer transfers ownership of the municipal water and sewer to the Town of Sherburne and the developer receives costs back over 10 years through a TIF, which is a tax incremental financing. There's a lot of details that still need to be worked out with the TIF and the costs, but this is sort of our conceptual framework for a partnership between the town and the developer to bring the municipal water and sewer to the town center. So going through the infrastructure cost, this is from our consultant working through some of the costs. For a 40,000 gallon municipal sewer system, it would cost approximately $1.8 million. And then the construction for a 50,000 gallon municipal well system would be $1 million. And to kind of break down the costs of the well, the well would be $150,000, the permitting costs around $100,000, the treatment would be $300,000, the water tank would be $200,000 and one mile of six inch pipe would be $250,000. And the sewage, the sewage treatment plant would be expandable to 120,000 gallons. This would be under the ball fields, the existing ball fields that we've been talking about. And this proposal also assumes that the town, we'd be using the town's resources to help with the construction as well, to bring down the costs that would typically be higher. The approval process for development would be a town meeting vote in May of 2019, whether it would be a, this would, this is contemplating a special town meeting and not the April Town Meeting, but we can talk about if, what the better situation would be. But if it would be a town meeting vote in May, it would be for three zoning warrant, warrant articles. One would be the TIF on the assisted living over 10 years. The other would be a zoning change from the two acre to one acre zoning on Hunting Lane for the single families. And then the zoning change from 2,500 square feet commercial to 9,000 square feet commercial, which would allow a food market to come in because 2,500 square feet just wouldn't work for a viable market. And then the 41 North Main Street parcel could be zoned under, permitted under a PUD, Planned Unit Development, which would need planning board approval. So those, that would be the approval process for the development. So benefits to the Town of Sherburne, we feel a local food market that incorporates the Horstner House and celebrates historic preservation would be a major benefit to the town. Particularly, it would help increase walkability and vibrancy in the town center as well, sort of as a meeting spot and a place to, for the community to go. The town receives municipal water and sewer for the town center district. It provides a healthier drinking water to the town center due to the current setbacks. There's a commercial tax base that increases over time to- There's a commercial tax base that increases over time to a full value after 10 years, and it creates more opportunity for the business to evolve into a more vibrant downtown. Concerns that we've heard over the past few meetings, how does this development affect affordable housing goals? So we'll go through that as one additional slide. Does this development change the character of the existing town center? How does the town make sure all the financial and engineering figures being presented are accurate and not biased? So affordable housing with the assisted living is estimated that the assisted living units will be counted as units, as housing units. So typically, what is done is there's an in lieu payment for those housing units to a, to a, to a housing trust essentially, or they would, or the assisted living operator would designate a certain number of assisted living units as, as affordable. The memory care units would not be counted as housing units. And then an agreement between the town of Sherborne, the assisted living operator and the developer needs to be met before approval of a special permit. So that, that would be, need to be figured out in terms of the agreement between all parties. And then the impact to the existing town center character. The historic house is going to be preserved and converted back to its original use as a tavern. An appropriate and sensitive addition to the home is going to be approved and worked through the Sherborne Historical Commission. The new assisted living and memory care will not exceed three floors and won't exceed any other building in Sherborne's town center essentially. And the single-family homes on Hunting Lane would be consistent with the current zoning as single-family zoning on that, on that parcels, on those parcels. As you can see here on the Hunting Lane side, it's, would be one acre zoning shaded in the yellow, and then we would keep the existing house that is currently on the property at two acres. And then assurances and oversight. The developer will show through a fiscal impact analysis that all financial figures presented are accurate, and this report will be peer reviewed by the town consultant. The developer will have to show through a traffic impact analysis that proposed uses will not adversely impact current traffic. This report will be peer reviewed also by the town consultant. And all infrastructure for both development and municipal water and sewer will be reviewed and approved by the town consultant. So part of this is, we want to see where, so we just didn't come out of the blue with, you know, having a market or having a municipal water and sewer. We went back to some of the, the surveys that were taken back in 2014, and there were, it seemed like there were a lot of people in favor of a public water supply and sewer wastewater treatment to enable development of the town center. This is directly from the, the slides from that, that survey. And so this is some of the, the information that we gathered from that. There is strong support for a small grocery store, but not a supermarket. And then also, there was strong support for permitting businesses to share a septic or small package wastewater treatment facilities. So based on those two surveys that we've, that we pulled, there is strong support for a small grocery store. 88% of those surveyed favor a small grocery store. And then also, there was two to one support for a public water supply, sewers and wastewater to enable development of the town center. So this is part of the reason why we're here and proposing this is because we feel it's something the town is asking for, and we're trying to figure out a way to make it work through our development. And, and the town's financial obligations will not, the town will not pay for the proposed municipal water and sewer. The cost will be offset by the taxes generated from the assisted living facility. And if the town were to design and build a municipal water and sewer without the developer, the cost would be approximately 20% higher due to procurement laws. So the next steps that we're asking the board, selecting a call, a special town meeting for a vote on the three proposed warrant articles. The developer to initiate an informal outreach, informational outreach effort to inform the community about the development and the infrastructure proposal. Developer to work with, developer and the town to work together in providing engineering costs and financial arrangements for the municipal water and sewer. So that's our presentation, and if, we're happy to answer questions if the board wants.
Yeah, I'd actually prefer to save the questions to the February 14th meeting. Hopefully Paul, our fifth member, can be there. I am pleased that, I think there's an incredible amount of work and information that needs to be provided, so I'm really pleased that this would be not at the regular town meeting, but a suggestion is to do it as a special town meeting, which is what we did for Coolidge Crossing, and I think that makes a lot of sense. We've gotten a number of comments, but I, I'm not going to read them into the record because I, I agree with the recommendation. Let's hold off on any questions from the board and from the public until the 14th meeting.
Yeah, one statement per second.
Sure.
Just to your second bullet there, and I know there's a lot of questions out there in the field, you might want to consider giving a contact info where people can approach you for questions, just like in your second bullet there, so when they show up on the 14th. Because I know the questions are going to revolve around a number of details, and I think it might be in your best interest to start to reach out now and to start giving some contact information to the general public.
We are, we are putting a website, we are putting a website together and an FAQ form that can start answering a lot of these questions, and we are working with consultants right now to be able to provide answers to those questions as well.
The informational update is helpful. This is very different from what I've seen before, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for the update.
One, one question, in terms of the meeting that we potentially are scheduling for the 14th, is there any way to do that at an earlier date as opposed to like the 31st, or, or is that too early?
We have a meeting on the 31st.
I don't think, I don't know that you guys are ready. We don't know if a TIF works. That's the critical piece to the financing of this.
Yeah.
And it doesn't make sense to keep going through this based on a TIF if we don't have some assurance that a TIF works. Assurance from our town council and assurance from your council. If, if we get that, then a TIF is real. Right now, it's just an idea. It's a good idea, but it's the fifth time we've seen that idea. We need to know it's real. That's what I would suggest, so, so be ready for that on the 14th so we can progress the discussion beyond whether it's even feasible.
And Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day, yes.
Carol Marple, town clerk. I was just curious what your timetable is for a special town meeting.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
The next consideration of a warrant article is from Sean Colleen to change the Community Maintenance and Development to the Department of Public Works. Please.
How'd you think of the name?
Sean, Sean, we can't hear you without a microphone.
That's the whole point.
We have to have more strokes though.
I have a spot.
Yeah. Yeah, the 1989 article, yeah. You have that here.
Why did somebody choose? I don't like, I don't like it when town boards and departments change names, Sean. I think it's not a good idea.
So, in your packet is the article from 1989.
Really?
He's never heard that before.
Nobody's ever said that. In 1989, they put a lot of time and effort into an article with the purpose of consolidating several different departments, which they successfully did, and named it Community Maintenance and Development for various reasons. Over the years, that's become a little bit confusing, and probably more so now. It has the look of a development arm, which it's not. And recently, I've, I've almost had to abandon it because typically, no other town calls it Community Maintenance and Development. I've never heard that anywhere else. So I have to explain it as I'm telling people what my title is.
None of the other 365 towns in the state have a CMND?
No.
Sherborne is unique.
Then we're special.
I don't know what percentage are DPW, but it's most of them. On, on state forms, we can't use CMND because nobody knows what that is. Most of them are filled in, pre-filled with DPW, so. The intent of the article was to consolidate the Highway Department, the Land Management, Recreation, a tree crew that we had in 89 under one director. So that is going to be unchanged. The intent doesn't change, but the name does.
I think this is kind of a no-brainer.
That's what they said about Select Board.
I definitely support this. In fact, specifically, I helped a little bit with Gino and Sean filling out the notice of intent for the MS4 permit, and we did. We changed it to DPW because EPA is going to look at it and be like, why is your Economic Development Department, you know, doing work? And it just, it's such an industry standard. It makes more sense. It's cheaper to buy clothing because everything's pre-made but DPW.
I'll move to include this on the warrant.
Do you want to try and negotiate Sean and his crew doing the spray painting for the name change?
I want, I want his kids to, Chandler and Trevor to do it.
Yeah, we might do that. You'll notice there's no trucks that actually have CMND on them.
I'll definitely second that, but there's no language of the specific article here. I just want to make sure you spell out Department of Public Works and whatever else it is. I just see the old, the old one here.
Within the past few days, the Carol actually dug up the original one.
Yeah, I see the original one there. That's interesting. Like I said, I think we'll need some, eventually some official language that'll be in there. And imagine, maybe a little effort, because he's going to go through all the bylaws and the zoning and have to, you know, do a find every place and change everything and this.
No, I think you do it the way we did it with Select Board if you want to, and just say that in, in the bylaw, every time that word is used, it's replaced with DPW, Department of Public Works.
And it, it was timely for me because I know that the general plan is due to go out to print, and I'd prefer it, if they can, it would be nice if they could change that to DPW rather than have CMND in it.
Yeah, we certainly discussed this a few times over the last couple of years, so, Jeffrey?
I just have a quick question for Sean. Is this?
Who are you?
Would this encompass town buildings or not? Is that considered as a town building still right now, they're separate from CMND? And I don't know if we're talking about merging the two or if it's just a name change.
We changed the position description for the director, CMND director, to include the Land Management.
Facilities Manager.
It's two different titles right now. Yeah.
Yeah, but you're the only staff in.
We're not talking about merging departments. I think it's just changing the name of CMND to Department of Public Works. So the town building stays town building.
Is it Facilities Management?
Well, I mean, in the budget, it's called town buildings, but.
Facilities Manager was what was added to the position.
Right, right. So that wouldn't change?
Yeah. But town buildings would be still a separate.
Still a separate budget, yeah.
And I'm sorry, we had a second on that motion? All in favor? Thank you, Sean.
Two and O tonight, Sean.
I'll be here all night.
His budget's coming up soon. Two and one, okay.
Fifth item on the agenda is the discussion review of departmental budgets, capital requests for 2020. Sharon, do you want to leave this document and do it by department? Why don't we do it by department? Veterans is up first. Mr. Brody.
Good evening. Doug Brody, 7 Currie Street. I'm a Sherborne Veteran Service Officer.
There's nothing in my bedroom.
There's, I know.
I'd like to give you, these are just the comments on the budget.
Do we have the budget, Sharon?
No, I didn't read it.
So what are we doing?
Thank you, town.
As you see from my notes there, the budget is going to be level funded. There's been very little change since last year. One change that I have made in the budget is I put a new line item in, which is called the Memorial Day Event. We haven't done that in the past. Those costs were usually part of the Veterans Day expense, but that didn't make a lot of sense. So I've, you can see I've made a reduction in the Veterans Day expense, and I've made somewhat of a reduction also in meeting and seminars, which was not needed, and that money has gone into the Memorial Day Event. Just an explanation on the benefits of $3,000, which is level funded. These are unknowns in, in, to me, if someone's going to be asking for a benefit of some kind partway through the year. It has occurred before, and I just want that $3,000 as a hedge against that. Remember also that any of these funds that are expended for that purpose are 75% or reimbursed by the state, but we have to make the initial payment, and then we get reimbursed. I did want to recognize, as long as I'm here, the efforts of people who've been involved with the veterans' activities. Ray Wees, who's left town, who no longer lives in Sherborne, was responsible for instituting our Pine Hill School Veterans Program, and this is, and this year Joe Shanahan took the reins on that. Now, that's a valuable program. It has really been working out very well. It gives a good interaction between the schoolchildren and the veterans, and it's appreciated by all of us who have been involved with it. Mike Kekem is in charge of the Memorial Day activities and has been for quite some time, and Mike and Joe are both on the Veterans Day Committee, as well as Craig Winterfeld and Diane Moore, who is invaluable in her attention to detail in keeping our eye on the ball. And my thanks to all of them. Now, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would love to approve for this budget or support this budget.
Do we do all the budgets at once? I think last year we decided to.
We do that, that's fine.
Just have them, like, that's typically what we did at advisory. They'd present us and then just approve the budgets once everybody's as finalized, because it's hard to approve a budget.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I like that approach because.
Paint presentations and ask questions, but then we, right before the public hearing, we'll vote on all the budgets.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mike's wrong.
That's fine. I'm just prepared to vote for the veterans, that's all.
Thank you, Doug. I think it's, I think that's good. And I do have to say, thank you for the Pine Hill program. I think that's a great exposure for the kids.
Commissioner Tyler.
Excuse me, I have a question. Susan Tyler, Cemetery Commissioner. I have to say that for all the work that I've been doing in the cemeteries and dealing with the veterans, Mr. Brody here has been invaluable, but is there a line item that you, is there a line item that you draw from for the military mark of medallions that go up in the cemeteries?
You'll have to speak up. I haven't been in the cemetery here.
I didn't know if you have a separate line item or what line item do you draw from.
There is, there is on here, Susan, care of veterans' graves. There is a line item for that.
I'm going to be drawing upon that.
I have a line. It's called a care of them.
Okay.
And we have $5,000.
$1,050, yeah.
Yeah, currently proposed at $1,050, Susan.
Thank you.
The level funded budget is $6,490. I just didn't, I haven't received anything. These are just for you to look at as.
Are these the same as what Doug gave us?
Yes. No, this.
That's what I'm saying, so, because he's made a couple of changes in his budget, but he's made a couple of line item changes, so you want to reflect that.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
This is just if you want to look at.
Actually, don't touch mine, I got a cold, you don't want to touch it.
This is just your day. I don't think we can.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Who's presenting for the Historical Commission?
I think we have to reschedule it because I don't see anyone here to reschedule.
Okay.
No, they submitted theirs.
I've managed to lose my.
Recycling.
Thank you.
Hi, Charles Tyler, 106 North Main Street. With the recycling budget, we're level funded again this year and made a couple of minor shifts in line items, but nothing that anyone would notice to speak of. And to keep things short and sweet, we have a very dynamic committee. I have a lot of my committee here with me tonight, and in fact, they came to, to. And to keep things short and sweet, we have a very dynamic committee. I have a lot of my committee here with me tonight. In fact, they came to observe the meeting and to support the budget. So just would request that our level funded budget be approved, and we will continue with our successful year. We had a really successful year with household hazardous waste, for instance, and food waste composting is growing in town, and we're having a lot of good luck with that. Couple, just a couple of highlights.
Charles, who supplies the composting bags that are now available when you drop off your compost? Is that you or is that the?
Oh, the kitchen sized bags, three gallon bags, yes, come out of our budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
We appreciate it to be able to.
It's been very popular. It's also helped to increase the popularity of the program, and it's moved things ahead very much that way, so.
Any questions up here?
Is there any, does this include the per tonnage costs or is this?
No, no, no. This, no, this is the committee budget only.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The other stuff comes in. Strom will be bringing it up later on as far as.
It's the official name is Recycling Advisory Committee, and it probably should be updated.
What was that data? I'm sorry.
The official name is the Recycling Advisory Committee. At the budget, that's what we should be putting on the department.
We don't have to even support anything doing.
No.
Yeah. Great.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. I've never heard of it being called the Recycling Advisory Committee, so I think we need to make some major revisions.
A question.
What is that level funded amount?
Oh, it's $3,230.
Okay. Town buildings.
Transfer station.
Did I miss one? I did. Transfer station.
Just transfer station.
But I didn't do it in the right order.
Backwards.
Actually, I'm going to ask Charles if the paper markets come back at all. I assume it's not.
Sean, can I get a copy?
Yeah, hold on. I got them stacked.
But that's okay, don't worry.
Hey, Charles, quick question. What's happened with the paper recycling market? Is it still trending down?
It's sort of stable now, but it's very, it's still kind of in limbo. We're still trying to figure things out. Right now, what's happening with our paper is that we are fortunate not to be paying to get rid of our paper, because our paper, because our paper is separated and well separated. We're actually getting rid of it for nothing except for shipping costs to get it to E.L. Harvey. We are paying slightly for the co-mingles, the plastics and the glass, things like that, but even that, we're paying a reasonable amount compared to a lot of the community. I was at a state meeting last week, and the amount we're paying is very reasonable compared to what we're on.
So no tipping fee on the paper because it's a clean source?
There's some tipping fee on the paper, yeah.
Yeah, great.
In the mix, we're paying like 60, I think? Something like that?
Probably $80 per co-mingle.
Okay.
Thanks.
So they level funded. I didn't. You just covered half of my discussion.
Good.
Good, it'll be shorter.
Except, like I said, I didn't level fund. One thing that is happening. So last year, we were able to catch just in time the increase from either netting money on the co-mingled or going to zero. We never saw zero. We just saw it jump up. We're still paying the same rate. What we're seeing now is because of the market volatility, everyone's full of their rafters with material, which is slowing down the delivery. So our hauler is sitting for one, two, three hours sometimes at either Milbury or E.L. Harvey. So he has to recover that. His truck can't sit for three hours and not start surcharging. It's becoming somewhat of a standard. So I attempted to cover what I think we're going to see on that. That's not going to go away. The Milbury facility is where our refuse goes. That's getting, that's hitting capacity because either another landfill or another incinerator shut down. I can't remember the facility. So that's where the market's trending. We also know that this year and the next two, we're going to see minimum wage increases. So we need to account for that with our contract for the operator, obviously. Minimum wage is going up 8%, so no one can absorb that. And new equipment, this year we got a, we did last year, not this current year, but I think the year before, we bought a container. We got to get another one. As they, they get worn and torn, you can't really keep welding plates on them. And we can't run them halfway across the state with trash falling out of them.
Sure we can. Cheaper when you get there.
I have a couple of questions. For the new equipment, is that a one-time thing or is this a?
No.
You're going to be spending $8,500?
You got to buy that. We need that container this year. We bought one two years ago.
Okay, so the $8,500 is going to be a new line item that you expect to be included?
Well, the equipment's always there. New equipment was there. They used it in FY18. It doesn't show up the previous couple of years because I think they spent it out of a different line. I think when they switched the accounting software, some things changed. Because you see, household hazardous waste three years ago was 111,000. That's not, that wasn't coded right. That was actually the.
Okay.
The disposal line.
And then my other question is on the recycling line item, that over the last few years, you know, it's been an average of 9,000. Last year was 13,000. We budgeted 31,019, and you're asking for 20,000. It just seems to be all over the board, and I just wanted some explanation on that.
I, we budgeted high because it was the first time, again, E.L. Harvey was starting to hit us with the co-mingled. So we didn't know if it was going to peak and stay or just keep climbing. It stayed.
Okay.
So I attempted to pull a number of where we are. Of course, we're only halfway through the year.
Right. You pulled it down part of the way, but you still want to leave some wiggle room.
And it's tracking low. I mean, you could see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's gone up a lot because of the change in the market, but not the 31,000 that we thought it might be last year, so.
That's good.
Right.
So.
I was going to ask you a question in terms of the increase in salaries. That's reflected on the disposal line and also on the operations line? Is that what you're saying?
No, operations is the contract with Ruane.
Okay.
And that does appear to be the bulk of the increase.
The disposal is the increase on, that's just our hauler, the guy that's moving our dumpsters. That's just, that's for the surcharges that he's going to have to hit us with for his truck sitting for three hours to dump.
Those two are the, I mean, 17,000 increase on disposal, wherever there's almost 30, almost 40,000 increase in operations. I mean, that's the bulk of the increase.
Went 55 from 38 on refuse.
Right, and it's the 8,500 in equipment, so.
What I was getting at was, so you've got a pretty substantial increase proposed. Does that reduce your leverage when you're trying to negotiate contracts with these guys, or is it all just a take it or leave it proposition anyway?
Well, again, we have no control over the disposal, right? That's just a straight tonnage. And that's a long-term agreement. I think that's a 15- or 20-year agreement with Wheelbrader, correct? And E.L. Harvey's given us the best deal in town. There's no towns around us that are getting what we're getting out of E.L. Harvey, so.
E.L. Harvey's the hauling line?
No, E.L. Harvey is all our recycles.
The refuse hauling is taking, transporting it to Milbury?
Milbury and they transport to E.L. Harvey.
That's right.
He does all the, he does all the material movement for us, and he's giving us a very good rate.
Looks like the budget number is close to what we spent in 18, so.
Yep.
Right. So the increase on disposal isn't really an increase. You're looking at an increase on a three-year average, but.
Right. I'm looking at, I'm saying you spent 54,000 in fiscal year 18. I mean, what are we on track to spend in 19, do you think?
Who do you, who was your vendor for disposal?
No, Sandcombe is hauling. Wheelbrader's disposal.
I don't see anything showing up.
I'll tell you. It's there. I don't have that in front of me.
No, it's right, there's the, there's the budget right there.
So Sean, the operations is the transfer station itself?
The operations is the contract with Ruane and.
And that's a fixed contract that goes up 10% this year?
Well, that's been a fixed contract for the past three. It's up this year. It needs to be negotiated.
What did you say, George?
So if we reduced hours, would we get it back to a reasonable increase?
Reduce the hours, of course it would change the contract.
They're pretty skeletal right now.
So maybe it's going there. It's getting charged on the wrong account, I think.
You can't reduce the manpower down there. That's just, it is what it is.
In 2016, they paid us to work for.
Other than, other than hours. What's that?
Is that because the recycle's still viable? I'm appreciating this now. In 2016, they paid us to work, to work for us.
We paid what?
They paid us. The contract operations is a negative value in FY16.
That's because the hazardous waste line item got, remember, 2016 to 17, we changed accounting software. So.
That's what it was. It was compared to the three-year average.
The numbers didn't transfer over, right?
So it's just coded improperly.
Right.
How do we have a three-year average?
We didn't pay 110.
Yeah, you got to, you got to, don't look at the three-year average. Look at FY18 appropriated and actual.
And then one other thing to look at at this, when I was looking at what Sharon handed out, which is what we spent in 19 to date, refuse hauling is already over budget for the year.
And actually, I just wanted to let you know that Diane just mentioned to me that she sat down with my accounts payable person, and they looked it all, and they went through, and they had to do a bunch of reclasses. So in total, the expenses are correct. It's just some things were charged not correctly, and those, it's not reflected in this report.
Okay.
So I will, once they're posted, I'll rerun it.
And also, you know, we're about to cross the threshold where the next, the next warrant, once the next warrant posts, I think it's next Tuesday, then your year-to-date numbers are going to make a little bit more sense, which aren't, you know, they're not on here. You're looking at a three-year average.
Yeah.
Just as a general comment, Sharon, on something like that with the three-year average, where there's something that just throws it way off because it's, you know, you're a financial professional, and we trust you, so put a footnote there. Tell us that that happens so we understand how to read it. I mean, I think, I think we could, we could make these reports more meaningful if, if it wasn't just the fixed, every time it's just, we're going to use a three-year average. Explain it if there's a discrepancy for a reason. Explain it to us, and then the public will understand it too, because you know what's going on, but we don't necessarily, and then.
Okay.
Particularly the big ones like line 5335, the 111,000 for hazardous waste. I would just drop a footnote, say, you know.
This was reclassified.
Reclassified or improper coding.
And then the three-year actual one, you'd put NA or something. It just doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, because that just skews it so much.
Yeah.
But this is great stuff. Thank you.
Those crazy advisory people wanting a three-year average who implemented that.
Jeff Waldron.
That's quick. You just threw that right out, didn't you?
Almost set up. Sorry, Jeff. Okay, great. Any other questions up here? Great, thanks, Sean.
I'm not going out.
Town buildings.
Got three, we have three things with him.
A couple more hours.
I changed my tab to DPW.
Next town buildings.
Next. Your choice, dealer's choice.
Town buildings. Two major items. We've been talking every year about building maintenance and how much we were lacking in it. So after years of talking about it, we infused over half a million in capital in two consecutive town meetings. We have to choose a point when we stop just throwing cap, waiting for it and then throwing capital at it. We do, we are doing a lot of repairs that are not, don't rise to the level of capital funding, but they hit a backlog where when they stacked everything up, when they did the onsite insight report, it was 1.2 million. We're still going to be asking for capital, but we also need to think about putting realistic numbers in the budget. So we're not continuously asking for a pretty large sum of capital, but if the town decides not to fund, then we're not doing maintenance. And then the other line item that we picked up, it came up some this year, and it's going up again, is the contract cleaning. For years, we didn't have any cleaning at the fire station, so the volunteers were volunteering to also clean the station. That isn't a very good way to maintain a building. And the police station, being a three-shift operation, needs a fair amount of cleaning, more than it's been getting. And that's showing up also in some reports from the state, because they come in and inspect the cells in the booking area. There's standards of care we have to keep in there.
So it's contractual services primarily, cleaning services?
Yeah.
Because that's the bulk of the increase. That's $75,000 increase of the 84 total, so.
There's more detail on the next.
Seventy.
I have a question about fuel. I know it's going to, because I want to talk about it in CMND as well. You have a big increase there, but I don't know what the, what you're basing that on. I do see that fuel costs are coming down right now. So I'm wondering why, for the budget, we have fuel costs going up based on what we've spent, you know. I know last year, it seems like in 18, we spent 20 grand.
So there's a line in here that, there's a line in here that didn't get fixed as well, that we got a kick. What happened over the course of six years is the police department had zero or just about zero on the gas bill. So it threw the budget off. I think it was more than six years. It might have been eight or nine. So when they came to us, we held that off and said, well, we don't, we can't fund last year's bill. So at last year's town meeting, we funded that.
We did the supplemental part, right?
We did a supplemental to pay for it, and it's not showing up here right. It showed up here under electric. So.
Oh, because I see.
The increase isn't really an increase. It's an increase against a low average, again.
Okay.
Because we aren't trending higher on the fuel. We're starting, it throws it off, but we are starting to trend lower on electricity because we, although we're still waiting for a payment from ever source, we are seeing slightly reduced rates because of the solar panels making excess power at the highway garage.
We appropriated 27.5 last year. This year's 31. And heating and fuel has doubled. So I don't understand.
Where, where do you see?
I don't know what page you're on.
I think I'm, I think maybe I'm on the wrong page.
You're on the town building total. Last year, we appropriated for heating fuel oil for 16.5, and this year they're budgeting 23.3.
23.
You're on a different page then.
Look up at the top in the corner. It says town buildings total on.
I'm on the second page. That's right. Okay, good.
It's Form 3, Page 1.
All right, so why is the heat in this building going to double next year then? That's the page I was on.
People are cold in here. Diane just went to get a jacket on.
I don't think this one's showing double.
It's not dou, I mean, it's going up by 7,000.
The police station should show high because it's trending.
Yeah, it's doubled.
Well, it's doubled. It went from 35 to 7.
Look at the actual.
Yep, 3,500.
Budget. We look like, for example, look at FY18, appropriated 1,000. The actual is actually 5,700. And so it's, maybe 7,000 is not inappropriate for actually spending 5,700 budgeting, under-budgeting it.
Page you guys are on.
It's town hall. It's the, after the total page.
It says four in the bottom right-hand.
Yeah, page four of your budget.
Yeah.
Heating oil for town hall went from 3,500 appropriated in 19 to 7,000.
Same with fire department went up. I don't.
Look at the actual.
I'm not sure why that drew. I don't.
It's not.
Yeah, I understand why the heating costs don't go up proportionally in all our buildings.
Some buildings are staying level.
Some double, some are level, some are 20% up.
Yeah. I think you need to.
I'll look back at that.
Those and make them consistent.
Right, unless one of them is.
The police was supposed to go up.
Right. A town hall doubles.
Yeah, I didn't mean to double town hall.
Town hall doubled.
CMND stayed the same.
CMND level.
Fire department went up by 67%.
And police went up by 25%.
But I do have to say, though, if you look.
Police is supposed to go up.
If you look at the FY18, the most recent actuals, the budget are kind of mimic. Look at fire department. So it was 4,500, and now they're budgeting 5,000. The actual is 4,500, and they're budgeting 5,000. Doesn't seem unreasonable, you know what I mean?
And I also.
Look at FY18 for.
That's one that I would feel like with fuel, with heating, you'd want to take, that's one you're looking.
Be your average.
And you're saying, you know, just because you spent that last year, fuel costs were maybe a little higher in that one year, so.
FY18 was a brutal.
FY eighteen was a brutal year for heat, looks like.
And now, there, I think what I'm reading is, you know, well, fuel oil costs are down right now. So, I mean, we can't base it on that because it can change by the end of fiscal year twenty, but at the same time, if there's a three-year average in there, we should be, I would think, using that more than.
Well, if we have a budget that's going up by twenty-five percent, it's good to find something that we can nibble away at.
Right, exactly. I think all the little pieces can help if we can bring those in. And I think we need to talk about the building maintenance piece. I mean, that's, I understand what you're saying. That to triple it is a lot.
It's, um, it, it's not a change in how much we're spending. It's a change in how you want to fund it. If you underfund it, every single year, we're gonna go to the town meeting with a capital appropriation every single year that's higher, which we've done three years in a row now.
And again, with that line item, I see, I get, maybe it's specific projects, but like town hall goes from fourteen thousand to fifty thousand, but other buildings are, you know, some buildings are growing up a higher percentage than others. Maybe they need more maintenance than others, but.
Right.
I think we need an ex.
Some of it aged.
That's gonna have to take, get a lot, a lot of explanation. If we're gonna justify tripling a budget.
For the police too.
For, for building maintenance, then, I mean, we gotta get into some specifics. I, I think Jeff would probably agree with me on that.
Police station triples, town, town hall goes up by, uh, five times, which doesn't mean it's not warranted. It's just gonna be hard to explain.
That's exactly it. I just, I think it needs to be explained exactly what.
Right.
Where the number's coming from and why each building went up by.
Again, it shouldn't, it shouldn't even really be in a vacuum. We should talk about that and the capital at the same time and the onsite insight report because we have about a three-hundred-page document that we put a lot of time into that tells us we're underspending. We need to choose where, how we want to spend it. Do we want to spend it every single year as a fiscal, as a, as a town meeting article and underfund the budget? Because we know we underfunded the budget. It put us a million dollars behind.
Right.
So it would be irresponsible to not do something different than what we did.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
Building maintenance in two thousand and eighteen, the actual was almost twenty thousand. So the budget you're proposing this year is half of that.
Except for four hundred thousand dollars we spent.
Exactly.
That's not in here.
Right.
That's my point.
Yep. Yep.
Rip through half a million dollars that's not on this sheet. And it wasn't all capital equipment we bought.
So yeah, like you said, I think it needs to be discussed aside, beside capital and saying if we continue to do this maintenance, therefore, we're not gonna be spending X, Y, and Z in capital because we're maintaining our assets better.
Right.
This is what we've spent on capital on the buildings over the last three years and hopefully going forward by doing ma, preventative maintenance, that'll be lowered.
Right.
Great. I would, um, like to get the board's support to remove the information tech line out of town buildings and put it back in Board of Selectmen. It used to be under Board of Selectmen years, the year, years. And, um, I would actually like to move that twenty-five thousand dollar request also to a thirty-five thousand dollar request.
Well, we do the Board of Selectmen.
Why don't you move it to Board of Selectmen and we can discuss it then?
Okay.
Yeah, I like the idea of centralizing the IT clause. Something that's, we're gonna be centralizing it.
I think that's part of the government, government task force recommendations too, so.
Yeah.
And I'd probably go through and be able to reduce some from others' budget.
Okay.
So David, what did you say? Move that, change it to thirty-five?
Just, uh, move the whole info tech line with its history to Board of Selectmen with a request of thirty-five.
Looks like that's what you've been spending anyway. The twenty-five seems underfunded.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right at the three-year average. Are you ready to put your DPW hat on or?
Yep.
I think we still have to call.
I think it's CM and D hat for the last time is what you meant.
No.
It's a prophecy.
I didn't put DPW on there. Well, I, I put both on the sheet.
Okay.
So the first line is a line that wasn't, didn't have much funding and much use for before. We've been using several different areas to, to hire consultants. Sometimes it ends up in the Selectmen's budget. Currently, we're already under contract. The Complete Streets is a perfectly good example where we had to fund, um, the consultant for the finalize of the plan and then the engineering services to go to, to bid. That's not part of the funding from Complete Streets. So we got several hundred thousand dollars worth of funding, but we had to fund the professional service as part of it. So that's why we're bumping that line item up.
Sean, if we had a grants person, would that obviate the need for the additional funding there?
That's where that probably would still be.
It would be funded out of that.
The grant person?
Yeah, in other words, we had a presentation a few weeks ago about a, about a sustainability coordinator who was gonna write for grants. You just talked about Complete Streets. That's right within that job description. If the town was paying somebody to be a sustainability coordinator, that you wouldn't need that line item, would you?
Uh, no, I still, I'd probably need more in that line item because the, to the point, the Complete Streets grant, although it brought us in several hundred thousand, it forced us to spend money on the professional services.
The design.
Yeah, not, not the grant writing. The actual engineering services for the design. Green International did the plan. They did the entire, um.
And we have to pay for that even though we're getting money from the state for the work.
We, and we got a grant to develop the plan, the, the, the full matrix of the Complete Streets. But then when we go to actually do the construction, the construct, the engineering and construction supervision of it, that's outside of what we can do, is funded there.
Complete Streets should pay for construction oversight.
What's that?
We got Complete Streets to fund kind of construction oversight.
Construction.
Construction oversight. They did pay for that, actually. They didn't pay for the design.
Right.
We actually had to do the design. We actually made the house, whatever.
The design work, by definition, the Complete Streets never pays for the.
So interesting, we got, uh, we got two Complete Street grants. The first one, it just was omitted from a line item under grant approval, so it didn't pay it. We stuck it in the next year, we got them to pay for it.
Right.
But is this an ongoing, again, I'm gonna ask you the same question again. Is this an ongoing expense?
Yes. But, and it's also, there's several other areas where we do the same thing. And we also, at times, have to hire an engineer to either assess a drainage problem or a road erosion problem, um, that we need. We don't want to be funding that out of the materials line item, which is the next biggest line item, or we're just, that wouldn't be right.
Do you keep that engineer on call and do contract it? So essentially, you give him like, I don't know, a thousand hours throughout the year, whatever else, and they'll come on call? Or do you have to actually contract each time they come out?
Um, we have two different firms we use on call. Green.
Yeah.
Doing a lot of work for us in different areas and, uh, and, uh, help me.
AECOM?
They just did, yes. Thank you.
All right. We should move this though.
Yep. John?
I'm just gonna, John Higley, fourteen Southwood Road. I'm just gonna say, there's a lot of different kinds of grants. There are some grants that will, that will, will pay for, uh, the engineering and, and as Sean says, the Complete Streets does not, but there's, there are, when you talk about the, the value of somebody to focus more on grants, there are a lot of different kinds of grants. Some do, if we're getting grants to, to pave the road, save us a lot of money, then maybe if we have to pay for the engineering, we're still getting significantly ahead.
Okay.
Brilliant. Thanks, Sean. Quick question for me on the police detail in the reserve fund transfer for the tree cutting.
Yep.
Is that under line item five-three-oh-five?
Which section?
You gotta pick the right section because there's so many.
I'm looking at highway.
Page five.
Yeah, this one's on page five. Uh, there's a snow police detail on page six.
And number three, page three.
And there's one for land management on page seven.
So the one for land man, oh, I stapled this out of order. The land management one that follows the tree service, uh.
Snow and ice is the same.
Is, is the, the one that goes with tree service. There's two different police detail line items. A third ended up this year because of the March storms.
Right.
Uh, that, that, that was new. We wanted to track that. Ultimately, we ended up getting reimbursed for some of that anyway, so it was worth tracking.
You don't have a police detail line in the land management?
I do.
Yeah.
Where is, I don't, I'm missing it. Oh, traffic details.
Traffic details.
But that didn't change. That's six thousand and six thousand.
No.
Even though we just talked about the fact that.
And it probably should, but I ran up the other one, which they end up in the same place in, uh.
I see you increased tree service from fifty to a hundred, tripled that one to fifty to a hundred and fifty.
And again, again, it was more because I wanted to discuss where do you want the tree service to land?
Well, because that's, that's the question. I know right now we have a ton of tree work that we're doing. Eversource is doing a ton of tree work. What's the proper annual operating number for tree work? Taking out of context like where we're at right now today, I think we need to look at what the correct number is for an operating expense on a year-to-year basis in a normal circumstance because stuff above and beyond that really is, in a way, a cat, an extraordinary expense. It's not, you know, is it gonna cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year going forward? Or should we be closer to the fifty that, you know, we were budgeted? I know it's probably somewhere in between, but we need to talk about what's an extraordinary expense versus a regular operating expense.
Right. And how we want to fund that for the next year.
Yeah.
I mean, in reality, one fifty might cover it this coming year. It probably won't.
Right.
Two, two to three, if we do that, if we keep doing that and whatever Source keeps doing, we won't have roadside trees. So we have to hope we don't keep doing that.
Right.
But I'm not a big fan of walking into a fiscal year knowing I'm gonna ask for a reserve fund transfer. So that's why I put it here. If you, if we choose not to, that's fine. We, we should reserve it somewhere.
Sean, what is the next line down? The fifty-three-oh-one under, uh, land management, contractual services of fifty thousand. What does that cover?
That's mostly the, um, the lawn mowing, all the fields, all the grass for the buildings.
I do have a question actually. So, you know, I talk a lot about the NITTS MS four permit. Does this budget include that or is that coming out of the capital request? Because I know like year two has the, uh, outfall sampling. You're gonna have mandatory annual catch basin cleaning as well as high-risk structure identification, stuff like that. Is that actually integrated in this or is that out of the capital appropriation?
So there's still some capital money left for the consultants. We won't increase the workload on catch basins because we're one of the few towns around that cleans a hundred percent of the known catch basins. And we're still very limited in our scope on what actually fits within the permit.
Yeah, I know. It's not the complete area of town. But I do know you have to identify, so you have to go and, and, let's say there's a catch basin that, that fills up quicker. You have to do a report on that catch basin. You have to put in a thing. You actually have to report on every catch basin in, in the permit and so on like that. There is definitely extra effort. You are right though. We're actually more in compliance than, uh, than other towns.
Right.
And as far as those that are in, uh, Charles River Water Basin, we're actually sort of the least affected by the permit. In that sense, it's good. But there still is additional, especially year, I think it's year two, year three sampling is something I worry a little bit about, so.
Right. And I don't think there's actual physical work we have to do in year, year two and three, right?
I don't want sampling. I think sampling, sampling's one of them. Trying weather sampling and, and the mapping, which I think a fair amount's up and done, but. But it's year four, then you actually have to construct a BMP.
In, right, exactly.
Yeah. So I'm just wanting to make sure that that's either integrated in here or if it's a.
To some degree. And some of that is in that, in that first line item that we talked about. Because whatever falls outside of the MS four, I was expecting we'd have to spend on some engineering services, uh, if and when we'd run out of that capital money that was going to AECOM.
And something we can think about, um, I think the fourteenth community in the state just enacted it, I think it was Shrewsbury, um, making a, uh, utility fee for stormwater. So if you ever wanted to consider supplemental funding sources, that is an avenue that more and more communities are utilizing.
Which is just another tax increase by a different name.
Sean, can you explain the?
Takes it off this rule.
Increase in salaries, is that, I know you shifted, did you shift some things around, from different departments? And I guess, I know you just, is it, this takes into account a new contract?
It does take into account a new contract.
That's the, because it looks like in total, the, um, salary line item is going up almost eight percent across the board, like from six-oh-eight to six-fifty-six.
Yeah, it takes into account my salary, which of course the average is gonna show low from two years ago.
I'm not basing that on average. I'm talking nineteen to twenty.
Right.
It's a seven point nine percent increase in total salary expense.
Right.
And I.
Some of that I think we funded low.
Okay.
In nineteen.
I see the Foreman on, on four-twenty, like the Foreman was, like we spent more in eighteen than we had appropriated in nineteen, so.
Yeah, and some of that was he was covering for the, uh.
That's, that's, that's probably one of the bigger increases.
That was a transition, yep.
Right.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Okay. Oh, that's right.
And of course, everything's covered in the new contract, and this, this matches. We made sure that this sheet matched.
Right. Okay. Just wanted to double check. Cause I mean, because we're showing a substantial increase in your total budget. And as Mike said, if there's anywhere, I mean, ask every department this, but to have the town buildings have a big increase and this increase, we've gotta, we've gotta kinda see if there's anywhere that we can whittle it down.
Right.
I mean, maybe, I know a hundred and fifty is on the trees. I think that's one place that... I don't think that's gonna be a regular number every year, so I think on an operating basis, we shouldn't be including a hundred and fifty in there. I think we should somehow, I don't know Sharon, what you would recommend to do there, but I don't wanna put a ba- Jeff would probably agree with me on this. We've talked about this when I was on advisory, that you don't wanna put a base number, you don't wanna increase that base number to a hundred and fifty thousand. Because then going forward, that's an oper-
It's a special category, it's akin to snow and ice, where you can have huge fluctuations between years, but snow and ice is in the budget. I know Paul has strong feelings about this, cause he talked, and I went through the class here about how to overspend. That's one of the reasons why I don't want to overspend.
Right.
Right, that's not true.
Explains the logic behind it. You can reduce snow and ice. The tree thing is somewhat similar in that it's, you know, unusual condition.
Right.
But we were underfunding it. When you look at historical pattern, speaking for Sean here, I think we were underfunding it immediately. So the reason why it's at a peak right now is because of obviously the, you know, the caterpillars and everything else, the droughts. But it's also we were underfunding it. So even if those hadn't happened, we could elaborate on this show, we probably would've had some catch-up work, just like now building.
No, and I understand that we could, in the future, reduce it, but the, I hate to increase a ba-, I don't know, in an operating budget, once you go to a certain number, it's hard to come back down from it, even if, even if we can, will we? I mean, I, I think we need to-
I guess I disagree with that a little bit. I mean, I think this really is akin to snow and ice, where it's cyclical. This is, and we know that. What we don't know is how long the damn gypsy moss are gonna be around.
There's a big difference though.
I think it's a special expense though. That's, that's my whole point on this. I, I think in an operating budget, you want what your typical annual expense will be for tree maintenance. And then I think we have a special line item for extraordinary expenses. And I feel like a big chunk of this is an extraordinary expense, hopefully. I mean, I don't think we plan on spending a hundred and fifty grand a year on tree maintenance in perpetuity. The other thing you wanna do, or you could do, is you just budget forward. So over, over ten years, how much do we wanna spend on tree maintenance?
Right.
We may need a lot of it now, and if we use a lot of it now, we don't wanna use as much of it in the future. But we don't do that. We think a year at a time. Other than capital items, we just think a year at a time.
One might think if we take most of the two-hundred-year-old oak trees down from the side of the road, our tree budget might go down quite a bit, unfortunately. So the, there's two ma-, one major difference between snow and ice and the tree is, snow and ice, we're talking about how much money I'm gonna spend this weekend on snow. We don't know.
Right.
Dead trees are dead.
Right.
I mean, they have to come down. They cost a lot of money to take down.
And I think what George is saying is like, for example, the guidance said, we want you to take your FY nineteen budget and be flat. If that's what, you know, the guidance said, and if, if your budget's already increased.
If next year we go in with a hundred and fifty thousand, it's easy for you to go flat on that, and the following year, in twenty-one.
True.
So that's-
To that, if you, if I walk into the year at fifty thousand and all, I'm gonna, so this, this particular year, by the time we were rolling into this year, I, I could see that I was gonna use the budget on the daily calls of, a tree just snapped in half on Washington Street, I gotta get it down. It costs a lot of money to get down. By the time we could see through that, I couldn't put, I couldn't put a list out to bid. Because there's no money in the budget. I mean, I, I go out to bid, I ask David to sign a contract for fifty thousand dollars worth of work, and Sharon says she's not signing it because there's no money left. So we're doing a reserve fund transfer. We probably shouldn't do that the week after town meeting. That's my point. I need something to know. I, I can put fifty thousand dollars worth of work out to bid because it's there.
I understand that you, that you need it. I'm just trying to figure out what the best way for us to be handling it in the operating budget.
Here, I wanted to point out, there's actually a category called snow tree work, which is an historical category. But if you look at the tree line item under land management, it shows, uh, forty-nine thousand spent in just the year eighteen. But actually, we had another fifty-five grand on the-
Right, in the snow tree work.
Snow and ice, which was snow tree work. So we actually spent hundreds and five grand on trees in. But we discontinued Sean's category, so we just continued the snow tree work.
Again, the, the snow tree work is just like the police work. That was the March storm. We needed that trackable so that we could go to FEMA or MEMA and get it funded.
Right, I know there's a reason, but-
But Jeff just found you fifty thousand dollars, is what he's saying.
Do you remember March?
No, I'm saying Jeff just found you fifty thousand dollars in your tree budget for this year. I'm saying is part of that hundred and fifty for emergency situations like that, that you're gonna wanna track it under the snow and ice budget. I know you were shaking your head, Aaron, to that. Right. In an emergency situation, you wanna be able to track it, right, for FEMA?
Yeah, as long as it's trackable, like, so when I'm in the middle of working, I actually got a phone call this fall. But as long as I have tracking in terms of, you know, I can get a date. So basically, what requires me to do is go on the dates, the date of the emergency, or the date of the emergency. So Sean and Jeannie do a good job of tracking who's working, how much they're paying out, and what's it due to. If it's attributable to the storm, it's covered, you know, and I, I submit it and see what we can reimburse for it. So like this year alone, you got your thirty, I have thirty-six thousand in reimbursement for the previous storm. So I'm working on, you might not see it till twenty-thirty, but I'm working on the March storm this year, you know? But, you know, it's trackable, as long as I'm getting the invoices and, you know, the contract working and the overtime or whatever it is. They, even down to when they stop to eat, they cover it, you know? So I put every little detail that I can in it, and I've been able to get that, you know, without, I, I don't even, I didn't even know they were separated. It didn't matter to me, as long as I-
Okay. So tree work can all be in one line item, for, as far as you, okay.
I actually left it there so that Jeff would pick up while I was talking to you about my budget. But that's exactly why I was like, couldn't have more.
If we actually do the tree work on an ongoing basis, it might not happen in a, in a storm.
Right.
It might not come down.
Good point.
So it's, and then, and it's, what they're telling us, three times as costly to do the tree work in an emergency than it is on planned mode. So if we do more of it on a traditional basis, it might not, you can still do FEMA for snow and other things you can't cover, but the tree work will go back.
Although I assume that the plan, even for planned work, I assume the rates have gone up. That there's so much demand for arborists now that I'm assuming it's costing you more now to contract with, with these guys than it has in the past. We need to become a wholly owned subsidiary of EverSource so we get the Stanley rates. Terrific, anything else up here?
No. It's time to move on.
Thank you, Sean. Chief Kenny, I don't know what you did to get on the very bottom of the list, but somebody, you know, you must've annoyed somebody up here.
They let Sean go with three budgets before year one.
Hey, thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, so, uh, not asking for any million dollars' worth of trucks or anything, so. I think that the, obviously, the biggest increase that you're gonna see, I think, or I know for a fact, is due to, uh, the governor signing, um, basically for Massachusetts, for the municipalities to become, uh, it's an OSHA state in totality now, not just in private industry. So, um, that has some fairly significant impacts for us as a fire department. And, uh, you know, it's kinda having a, there's a lot of collateral damage from that. So, um, one of the things that we talked about today in the District fourteen meeting and from FCAM is, you know, there's a lot of, it's, it's, it's global. All over the state, departments are feeling the, the pain from that and having increased budgets or figuring out ways to manipulate their budget to account for it. Because come February one, you're supposed to be moving in direction of compliance or being compliant. And, um, so it's one of those things that, it's an unfunded government mandate that they're looking at possibly passing some legislation to get some relief or reimbursement from. But unfortunately, for it to be an unfunded mandate, you have to pay for the stuff first, and it truly be unfunded. So, um, we may see some relief at some point from it, but, um, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I haven't been living in this state that long. If, um, if in history they have unfunded mandates and they do something about it, then we have a chance. But if not, then we have, we don't, so.
We have a lot of unfunded mandates.
Okay. So, um, I, I created two new lines to account for that, for OSHA equipment and PPE, and then for OSHA slash NFPA certification and testing. There were some things that historically the department has, um, you know, deferred or not done on an annual basis that now we will have to do on an annual basis in order to be compliant. In terms of ladder testing, hose testing, every single SCBA being tested, every single bottle being tested, tracking every person being fit-tested annually. So I broke down all of those costs, and that's where the, the twenty-six thousand came from. Just for example, the aerial ladder testing for our ladder truck alone, which usually we deferred, or historically was deferred, is about a seven, between a seven and ten thousand dollar bill annually for it to be third-party tested. And if they find any deficiencies, for them to fix them. So this year, for example, um, we had a, a maintenance issue with it, and it was a seventy-six hundred dollar bill, and there was nothing we could do about it. It's just what it is. Either we take a, you know, nearly million-dollar piece of equipment that's vital to our operation and put it out of service, or we fix it. So that's, uh, that's part of the reason for that, and that, you know, realistically, that's the major bulk of, of every increase. There's another one, um, in our professional and, and technical. Kinda goes in line with the IT thing, but, uh, public safety IT is a little bit different than just standard with the security measures and the records management. Things that we have to do. For example, we are one of only three municipalities in the state that are NMS three compliant for our records management for EMS right now. We're actually one of the, uh, organizations that's being used by the state to pilot that program. And that's in thanks to Klaus Allman. He's worked with our records management company and, you know, used his computer engineering and computer, uh, software skills to, um, enhance our, uh, records management system to make sure that, you know, we are compliant, but also on the leading edge of that. Right now Klaus does not get compensated for that work. Or if he does, he's turning in, you know, a time sheet that I forced him to turn in. Because I feel like one of the things that's important to me, and I feel like is important to reflect to the town and, and to the select board, is what it actually costs to do business, or what it actually costs to provide this service. And for many years, um, you know, from everything that I'm learning and the more I'm able to dig up, there's a lot that is, that is done, or a lot that is taken care of, that isn't accounted for. And that's out of the goodness of people's hearts. It's out of the goodness of the people who live in this community, who have, you know, volunteered their time, volunteered their services, volunteered their human resources, or even their own funds to, to do things that, to make sure that the fire department was capable of providing the service necessary. You know, it's, it's a good problem to have, but nonetheless a problem. Because if Klaus just left today, I'd be sitting with a giant hole and figuring out how to take care of my IT needs for the fire department.
That may be one that we need to look at, cause the, the new governance task force has recommended much more centralization of the IT functions. I hear what you're saying about you may have specialized in different needs. I, uh, the, the, kudos. The projections on Form Four is just terrific. It's a great summary of all this. I had one question. I think it's a failure of my memory. On the ambulance transfer line in fifty-one eleven, it's in for eighteen, it's in for nineteen. I don't see it, any requests for twenty-twenty, and I'm sure I've forgotten something.
No, I mean, it, I didn't put it there when it was there before. So it was, it was done by the previous administration and then maintained the following years. So it was something that I, I, in looking at the numbers after I actually talked with Sharon and with David about this, you know, after I turned in my budget, I realized, I'm like, uh, I'm gonna need that in order to fund the ambulance appropriately. I think from, from talking with Sharon and then trying to track things, last year, we really didn't tap, I didn't tap into that transfer at all. But I will probably go in forward. It was, or I definitely will go in forward because the, uh, and again, that's one of those things that'll, it could be cyclical. If I have a busy year and get a ton of transports and we generate a ton of revenue, I may not need that much. But, you know, if it's an average year or things continue on the course that they are, it's gonna, it's gonna be needed.
Yeah, you're definitely, you're gonna need it.
Yeah.
I did look at it.
Cause we don't have any, on the budget you're presenting tonight though, there's nothing there.
It's zeroed out.
You know what, though? I added it when I, when I did the summary for advisory.
Oh, it's in the secret budget. Okay.
I added, yeah, I did.
Have I been gone from advisory long enough? I don't get your big colorful sheet.
It's in here. I did add it, cause I talked with Aaron, and I made sure that I added it in, so.
It's not the one the select ones, it's in the other budget.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Last year, you gave me the colorful sheet.
I know. I will. I'll email it to you. We did, I did.
Advisory and Sharon have this information.
Aaron, I, yeah, cause Aaron and I had that conversation.
So you're gonna put the ambulance transfer back in?
Yes, yes.
And my other question on the salary line item is the financial clerk.
Yes. So that position is technically, it doesn't exist. There is now an administrative operations coordinator, which that person is required to be a certified firefighter, any MT, so that we can gap fill. And also, it has a positive impact on our ISO for our staffing numbers. So, um, and with that too, the actual accounting for that position, um, have explanation. So where it looks like that position's going up a ton, it's actually not. Because, uh, this year, the financial, that, that position actually is being paid twenty-eight dollars an hour because of this, there's a stipend for, uh, being a certified EMT and firefighter that's attached to it. It also makes it fit within the, uh, compensation plan that, uh, David and the personnel board had worked on. So that position is only really seeing the, the two percent increase as everybody else, but also, um, the additional eight hours. We continue to see that the, that position is, you know, Francie herself is, is doing similar things that Lorraine had to do as far as coming in, you know, and working quote-unquote detail hours to finish the administrative task or finish some of the work that's there. So in trying to eliminate that, you know, uh, wanted to just bring that position to forty hours from thirty-two. You know, things are really going in a positive direction. I think, uh, for us as a fire department, one of the things I went and looked, you know, with having, uh, a granite, a grant position currently that we're using and is, um, and the position that Francie has, we've, we've brought in since I've been here about a quarter of a million dollars in grant funds. In trying to do things to offset the expense or cost of, of delivering services. And we obviously will continue to do that. We've got grants that are out there right now that we haven't heard back yet, but we're hoping will be very favorable, um, to continue that trend. You know, and I think one of the things that, that allows us to do is try to not leave any stones unturned. I'm also working diligently on the, the pieces of, from the emergency management side to have some funds reimbursed, you know, some of the expenses of the March storms. You know, not, not everything is coverable, but I'm working, working pretty diligently on the state workbook and trying to get, you know, uh, as much money back as we possibly can. So, um, you know, it's a, it can be a bit of a daunting task, but it's, um, you know, I think it's, it's appropriate with, uh, with the growth that's, potential growth is coming as well. We did have a, over a ten percent upkick in our overall call volume this year as well. You know, so things are trending where there's a greater demand on service. And unfortunately, there's a thirty-two-year, a thirty-two-year-old problem. I found an old newspaper clipping from when the ambulance was first started and, uh, well, not necessarily when it was first started, but, uh, you know, when there was, you know, a demand for service. And even then, there was a, there was a concern about having enough personnel and attracting people or have people have enough time to, to provide service. And, you know, here we are thirty-two years later, and we're in the exact same predicament. So, you know, I think, think part of, or I know part of my responsibility is to make sure that, A, we try to figure out a way to provide some, a sustainable, uh, service. And, you know, we're definitely trying to look into ways to do that. But, you know, uh, unfortunately, one of the things we're probably gonna have to continue to look to do is, um, during peak hours, so those normal business hours is, is the workload on the people that are, uh, full-time is, is gonna increase. And because we don't have the luxury of having significant numbers of people who live in town who are able to drop what they're doing and respond to calls anymore. It's, uh, the well is, is drying up, especially during peak hours. We don't really have a problem. Like, we would have an emergency right now or a structured fire or something, I, I have no concern. We have great turnout, but everybody's home from their full-time jobs. We don't have as many of the JDs and, uh, you know, the Douse family or the Bucklers or those people who are in town and able to drop what they're doing to, to go respond to these calls anymore. So, um, it's a way I'm just trying to strategically address the need. I think, um, you know, we're very fortunate right now to have a position that's funded full-time for the next three years through a grant. So, you know, we, that's taken care of in essence. But that's, um, I think that covers the, you know, covering that, that increase. The hours are there, the demand for the service and the need for, uh, that position to have the forty hours as opposed to, uh, to just the thirty-two is, because that position is serving as a gap filler, is someone that's responding to calls as well. It's not just solely administrative. Um, you know, the demand is, is there.
Terrific. Any questions up here about the, uh, budget? And do we wanna do the, uh, capital request?
I don't think we're, oh, are we? I don't even know we have that.
Yeah.
I didn't think we were just talking about that.
I think mine are in. I just, um, mine, I wasn't, initially hadn't planned on having any, but the same thing, the unfunded government mandate, the, uh, our cascade system, which is a system we use to compress the air to put into the bottles for the air we breathe, is, uh, not compliant, nor is the fill station or the, our oxygen containment fill station. Uh, we actually don't have one. Another example of how resourceful the people within the department already created one. That sufficed for years, but now is far from being compliant and is riddled with several violations. violations of, of OSHA, so, you know, there is an upfront cost to it, but it.
In your pocket, you know, in your pocket, you should have the capital request there.
Thank you.
There's something there from Aaron.
Oh, good with the cost for 20 years.
Read it and weep.
So the major item is the replacement of engine, oh my god, this is so small, 3?
Engine 3, that's a few years off.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Oh, that's 2014, sorry.
2024.
2024.
24, even better.
Yeah, it's, it's years off, we're, we're.
I can barely read it now, I won't be able to read it at all in 2024.
They've got new trucks, they've got new doors.
There you go.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Everything's red.
Okay, Sharon, accounting.
Okay, I follow the guidance. One thing I do want to point out is that this is a leap year, so, and it's in there, but I, because we are, first of all, we're leap year, you have to account for that extra workday, and also we're, we're a cash basis, so this year it just happens to work out that when you count the number of workdays in the year, we have two extra days. So if you look at my compensation, it's going up 2.8% instead of 2, but that's because...
Did you double-check all the budgets that they accounted for that?
Yes, I did, I did, I had to go through all of them.
That's right, because I remember last time, that was a big question.
Four years ago.
Four years ago, yeah.
Yeah, did you miss it, or?
No, but, well, I think originally, in the original budget, it was missed.
There was a lot of weirdness in the budget that year because of that.
Yeah, some budgets did it and some didn't.
Yeah, no, we, I definitely had to go back and, and look at every single one, so, so I just wanted to point out.
So I'm sorry, I came in at 2.8 with the two days, and what was it without the two days?
Well, it would be 2%, but yeah.
Do you want to give her the two days off?
I'll take it. But I, but I do want to let you know that we did make sure that we caught that for every single department.
Unlike the federal government, when we furlough people, we don't pay them for the...
Actually, February 2nd is a Saturday, so I think we're happy.
Ah, it still means there's an extra day.
No, we actually have to go to a calendar and go work days, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
It's municipal finance.
And you'll, meetings going forward, you'll give us, I love that master spreadsheet.
I will, I definitely will, yeah.
It's like to see where we're at in a...
Yeah, I will, I'll actually update that and send it out to you.
Trying to figure out exactly the number that we need to be reducing by.
What's the gap, yeah.
My advisory, mine kicks in, so.
They love that. Yeah, it's, it's gonna, it is gonna be very tight.
I know.
Terrific.
These guys, these guys are tough.
Any questions? I do read your emails.
Oh, good, thank you. You wanted to send me a smiley face.
I'm trying, it's George.
That'll make you feel good.
Any questions up here?
Nope.
Terrific.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon.
My pleasure.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is TA report and selectmen reports.
I don't have anything to report. I have one thing, just wanted to let you guys know that I attended a meeting on Monday organized by Mary Ann Clancy to discuss a potential solar project on Prospect Street. A developer came to propose a, I think it's on a 36-acre parcel, it would be a four-megawatt system, right? Is that the number? Because John Higley was there as well, and it's, it abuts a town forest, and one of the, kind of the takeaway from the meeting was they were going to come back using higher efficiency panels, which would reduce their footprint and potentially donate some of the back of the land to the town forest that it abuts, because there's a pinch point that at, in the town forest that abuts this property, that potentially they could preserve some of the forest back there, because the solar facility would require them taking down a lot of trees, so.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to go to that meeting, because I had a conflict, I had a question, which is, in terms of aesthetics, is the, is it possible for us to ask for a shielding plantings?
Yeah, they, they talked about that between them and the abutters, you were, you're not going to see it from the road where this property sits, it's way, it's well back behind, I mean, it would, the only people it would affect would be the abutters and people walking through the town forest behind it for visual, visually, but the benefits to the town would be, we'd have to negotiate a pilot with them, and they said at a four-megawatt system, it would be about $60,000 a year, plus they would supply solar power to all the municipal buildings, which would result in like a 15% discount on our electricity, and they would offer it to all town residents, which could potentially reduce their electric bills by 15%. It's a community, community solar, is that what it's called? So.
I'm sorry, what, what's the percentage, 5, 8?
15.
1, 5.
So they, are they purchasing this land?
They're purchasing the land, yeah.
And once it's purchased, it goes off the tax rolls?
And then they sell, they sell, yeah, well, no, no, it's a public company, so it's...
So what's the pilot for?
That's, I don't know much about it, I'd have, I'd have to...
I mean, pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes, I think it's like a, because technically, it's going to be land improved by solar panels, so it's not going to be assessed the same as with a building, I guess, so it's a negotiation with the town as to what we would...
It's still a tax, so it wouldn't actually be a pilot.
It's really a tax, they call it a pilot, but I think it's really a tax on the property.
And like when they assess like rental incomes, rental properties, they actually do it based on the revenue it makes, you think here, there'd be some quantification of the revenue, but whatever.
And that's how, that's how it is calculated, it's based on like 15,000 per mega, I think they said 15,000 per year per megawatt, and they talked about...
What was the other thing?
Right now, the property's in 61B, so our annual taxes are only 12,000 a year on this 36-acre parcel.
I guess where I was going with that is, we're always talking about donations to town forest, but it does take land off the tax roll.
Right.
There is a pinch point, this is going to be a piece of town forest next to where all the trees have been cut down and where you can see the, the solar facilities, not like it's a super valuable piece from that standpoint, why don't we just take an easement across it rather than take more land off the tax rolls?
Yeah, you could, I mean, that, it's a, it was just an initial conversation.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if, you know, if we're going to get paid taxes on it, let's get paid taxes on a little bit more land.
Right, right, I think it was, it was just, Marion Nutra was there, and that was her concern was the town forest.
I agree about the pinch point, I completely, I completely agree, I know exactly where that spot is, you have to trespass to get past, but, right, I mean, yeah, but, but an easement would solve that problem just as well as accepting a donation.
Yeah, this was, they just wanted to see if it was something they, they thought the town would find possible, they're going to come back with kind of a revised plan that would use the higher...
We don't have a lot of zoning control over that either, you can't prohibit it.
Oh, exactly, and while the property could be used, well, wait, they'd actually have to get approval for a solar overlay district, right?
John?
I'm waiting for the chair.
No, I'm vice chair, I can do that, John.
He's not paying attention to you.
So, it's a large scale, we have zoning that identifies one location only, and it's in our transfer station, to, in a large scale anywhere else in town, we have to take two-thirds of the change of zoning.
Because it's a large scale? Because it's a large scale, you're saying?
Because it's a large scale. The alter, you know, the property owner wants to sell it and make some money.
Right.
So it could be developed, it could be...
Yeah.
No, it's true, like, that's one of the things, what's the alternative, what's, I mean, as Mary Ann Clancy said, as the real estate agent, her, her fiduciary duty to the seller is to get them the highest dollar amount, and who's going to pay for that? Somebody who may want to put in a 40B or a housing development.
Or a few houses.
Or a few houses, or, right.
All of which are taxed, so, you know, it's all part of the, we've looked at things like this in the past, in fact, you may recall, we drew, we...
Yes.
We decided to not vote in favor of an article to do just this sort of thing elsewhere, because the state provides strong incentives to put solar on rooftops and on disturbed land, for instance, like alongside a railroad.
That's a good thought.
That, that's already disturbed, like a transfer, like a landfill or rooftop, and they, they provide much less compensation, so you get, they have to put in more panels to get the same amount of money because it's in forested land, so there's reasons to not do this, there's reasons to do it, so in terms of the, the cost to the town, or the these, the cost savings to the town, there's other ways to buy renewable energy at a discount. So it's, it's, it was a good meeting, there's a lot of...
Yeah, he's a smart guy.
Yeah.
Smart guy. You're, you're pointing to the power line cut, but I know what you mean, you're talking to me really.
Well, depending on how much this land is...
Right, well, if they bought the 81, the existing house at 81, right, exactly.
With the 160, at the Y, which is, I think, up here.
Exactly, yeah, you wouldn't have enough for a road in there.
That's why, it would be less, Mary Ann Clancy...
Okay.
Less of the property owners, and so that's why they went total, because they really don't have access to, at that time, they didn't want to buy their house.
Right.
There's a lot of wetland there.
Oh, I know, I saw the map, but I just wanted to tell, that that discussion had started, and they may want to come to town meeting eventually for the zoning change.
Thanks for going to that.
Yeah, thank you. Eric, Mike, any? Terrific.
I don't, other than, than to say, as much as I hate seeing trees come down, it's really been good to see a lot of those...
Dead trees.
Dead trees come down, it's a shame, some of them are huge and beautiful, and there's a lot of wood, but in almost every one I've seen, you get to the base and there's a big chunk of rot, and it's just, it was, we, we were lucky to have a mild winter so far, I know that's about to stop, but at least gave them a window to do a lot of that work, we're going to be very glad they did that work.
You're not going to talk about the polar vortex splitting, are you?
No.
Terrific, I've got a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Mr. Higley.
Do you identify yourself?
Yeah, well, John Higley, what is that, we're broke, I just wanted to make one comment about the, there's a lot of other towns that have suffered the same type of tree mortality, and, and I'm trying to rattle this, just to make some attention, because there's disaster relief, there's FEMA, there's all kinds of different things that, so far, DCR has only offered some money for, for, I forget what they call it, legacy trees or something, a couple of trees, not for this roadside severe attack to our budget, but I think there's hope, because it's not different than the disaster relief issues of coastal erosion, and it's affecting, I don't know, 50 or 60 communities closely along the southern border of Massachusetts, we're kind of at the tip of, the northernmost tip of, so now, you saw the map, it was downstairs in town hall for quite a while, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get other communities to address the same issues, you guys have just been wrestling with it.
Great, second on the move to adjourn.
All in favor of the adjournment?
What's that mean?
That's a, Jeff voted for it.
That's a, a 5-0 vote.
So Jeff, is this your new thing?